Good evening, everyone. We're going to open the Inlands, Wetlands and Water Course Commission for the town of Trumbull, February 4th, 2025. I'm going to ask our clerk to do a roll call if she would.
Richard Gerard.
Present.
John Loria.
Here.
Carmine Taffayo.
Here.
Rich Deacon.
Present.
David Varespi.
Present.
Greg Sernica.
Present.
Bob Fragno.
Here.
Town staff Tatiana Solovey.
Here.
John Mayer.
Here.
And attorney Jim Cordon.
Here.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Colleen. All right, at this point, I'm going to ask attorney Cordon to give us the legal aspects of doing a Zoom commission meeting, if you would, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As has been the practice of this commission, the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission, the town of Trumbull, has conducted their meetings pursuant to Connecticut law by video conference and teleconference over the internet and/or the telephone. During the public comments section, which there will be tonight, we do have a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak may be recognized by the chair by electronically raising your hand, or if you're on the phone, by dialing star nine. Those instructions will be given again at that time. The agenda for this meeting was posted on the Trumbull Town website 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Materials for this application were also posted on the town website 24 hours in advance of tonight's meeting. Please note that if you post any comments on any sort of online format, those will not be included in the record and the commission will not see those comments. I would ask all commissioners and participants to remember to please identify yourself before speaking, be acknowledged by the chair. This is important so that we make sure that those who are listening only by telephone can know who is talking. I would ask that the chairman make sure that all votes be conducted by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. And finally, I'd like to remind everyone that tonight's meeting is being recorded. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. All right. We'll open new business, application 25-02. Philip Reardon Jr., it's a permit approval to fill and pool and use existing pool footprint and pool walls for a barn foundation, remove shed, pool, cabana, concrete pool patio and slate patio around pool. Install new driveway, plant privacy trees behind barn, potential mudroom installed where slate patio is off dwelling behind garage within a regulated area at 159 Plymouth Avenue. For the record, this is a violation, so. I see we have Mr. Reardon in, okay.
Yes, I don't know if you could, can you see me?
Nope, we see, no, with your name there, but we don't see the video part yet.
Is there a way to, uh, it's not. I don't know why it's not letting, oh, join as panelist.
Bill, can you correspond with the applicant and find out what?
The applicant is on his way in as a panelist.
Okay. Okay, there you are.
Okay.
All right, if you would introduce yourself, give your name and address, if you would, sir.
I'm Phil Reardon Jr. On this phone call as well as Phil Reardon Senior. I live at 159 Plymouth Ave with my wife Melanie.
All right, if you want to give us an overview of what your project is and what you've done to date.
So there was an existing pool that town record show was on the property since 1956. Well, we, my wife and I bought the property two years ago. We invested and renovated the inside. We got to the outside. It was in the back corner of the property, always kind of an eyesore. There's an existing shed in a pool cabana, I guess you would say. Pool cabana is ready to basically fall down at any second. After reviewing the cost to basically upgrade the pool, it was deemed that we just couldn't do it. And so we decided to use the existing pool that has a concrete foundation already in there and turn that into a barn. So new barn where the existing pool foundation is, new driveway, remove the concrete pool patio, remove the shed, remove the pool cabana, plant some privacy trees in the top right corner of the property behind the barn, remove walkway patio, and then, yes, the future, when talking with Tatiana, she said any future plans to include. So my wife and I have just been briefly discussing maybe turning the slate patio behind the garage into a future mudroom at some point.
Well, if that's something you intend to do, it should be part of the application, otherwise you'll have to come back in the future, so.
Yeah, that's listed on the application.
Okay, but I'm saying, you were saying it's a potential, so this is something you intend to do, all right. Anything else you want to state?
So, yeah, the, the, the structure of the, the barn is up. After getting a clear answer with Tatiana, I think it was January, at some point, she informed me that I still have to come through this commission after previous conversations or not. So that was, instruction was stopped the day I got the phone with her, which I think was January 14th, I believe. And so, I mean, obviously, I'd love to obviously continue, but once she told me I had to go through the commission, it stops. So there's no roof on it. I mean, the windows and doors are on my property, but nothing's been installed, no slab's been poured, no siding's been on, no Tyvek house wrap's been put on. Yeah.
All right, well, just for the record, I was out there with Tatiana. Remember, we met with you and your father, and I think we made it pretty clear, you had to come to Wetlands before you did anything, so just want to make that part of the record. All right, Tatiana, go ahead.
You.
You had something else? Go ahead, sir.
No, that was, uh, when, yeah, you guys did come out. I think I have that timeline. I think it was November 6th or 7th to do the site review about backfilling and whatnot. And somebody was supposed to get back to me. And I think I never received any answer on that. I actually found out from the building department on that when I was talking to them on a, an inspection for a customer that we were doing a service for in town.
I'm sorry, what was that last part again?
I said, I, I, building department, I, I heard that through the building department when I was doing inspection, at a job we were doing in town here with one of the inspectors. And the project came up and I was informed through them that the backfilling was allowed. It was never told to me, there was no communication about the backfill. When, when you, you and Tatiana left my property, I was supposed to hear back from you guys. And I never got an email. I never received any kind of update at all. The application's been in the portal. I have no communication from Wetlands at all in the portal. It's kind of been back and forth, and I understand it's kind of a, 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 a not a typical project because, I mean, who has a, a pool that they could use for a barn with a foundation? But there has been a lot of miscommunication during this entire process. I mean, I have a whole timeline here. I don't know how far we want to get into this or whatnot, but there's a whole timeline here of things that, you know, I go into the building, to the Wetlands Department, and I'm told X, Y, Z, I do that. And then I go in there and it's not the case. Since I talked to Tatiana, January 14th, communication's been good. We've been emailing back and forth. She helped me get this application through. I was talking to her about what's needed, what's not needed. But it seemed like the real contention, the entire, from the beginning, was the shed and the pool cabana. And when I went to zoning and to building to ask if it could stay, zoning told me that it was never an approval, it was never a condition of my approval and that I could keep it. So when I went back and told, I, I talked to John Mayer and that that was going to be changed from the application. I mean, I, he, we went over that. We went over the 100-foot setback lines needed to be discussed and the driveway location. They was also asked if that should be uploaded to the portal or if it should be uploaded, emailed to him. He said email to him because it would be easier. And that was done December 16th. And I've had four follow-up emails to him with not a response, and there's also been four phone calls without a response before getting ahold of Tatiana on January 14th and discussing what the process was after that.
All right, are you set? Are you good? Okay, Tatiana. I've clearly remembered, we walked that property, we were there for about an hour plus. And I'm positive, we made it very clear, because, you know, I've been doing this for many years. We told you it would require an application to Wetlands. I'm going to ask Tatiana to give her thoughts on it.
Yeah, it's been communicated clearly multiple times that an application to the Wetlands Commission has to be submitted. And we've actually communicated probably a week after Christmas. I have not prepared the timeline of communication because I don't think it's that important or relevant, but clearly the applicant wrecked the structure without any building permits, and as far as I know, there is a building stop work order on it currently, so that was done knowingly and intentionally and without any approvals. But going back to the substance of the application, this is a very unique property. It hosts a large pond from horse tavern, brook and tributaries, and it also has a private dam, which is in the state of disrepair. But it is in the, under the jurisdiction of Connecticut DEP, Dam Safety Unit. I was also notified that there has been some tree removal, so could the applicant please state whether any trees have been cut thus far?
There was tree removal probably a year ago when insurance came out. I changed insurance companies, and this was actually basically what started this whole thing. There was a couple hemlocks that were essentially dead, and the insurance company State Farm wanted to know when they did the site review, what's the deal with the pool, because it was obviously a danger. It hasn't been maintained or updated. I owned the house for two years. The previous owners, from what I've talked to the neighbors, it's been probably nine or 10 years since they even, you know, used it. And the hemlocks were basically dying. And a couple, every storm we'd have, branches would be all over the place, and they asked for it, and having a dog, having nieces and nephews running around. I had three local tree companies come out, all that everybody knows. And two of them said that the hemlocks are essentially dead, there's nothing you could do. One told me you could try to set, try to, um, you know, they had the disease already, you could try to save it, but at the same point in time, there's, there's, there's no guarantee. They haven't been treated in years to come. So there's been no, there's no massive trees coming down, nothing like that. They're eight inches. They're, you know, eight inches, nine inches around. We're not, it's not, it's not like the, the sycamores on my property, the oaks or anything like that.
Okay, I think whatever was previously cut, even if it was for safety reasons, it should be included in your application because no trees are mentioned currently. So that, that should be added prior to the next meeting. We've also discussed that a topography map should be submitted. So please make sure it is added in your package so the commission can see the contours on your plan.
That's the one that, uh, that you sent me?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
Otherwise, there is actually been a comment from one of the commissioners about a driveway calculation. I did do an area takeoff. There is a bit of a discrepancy in the numbers provided, so the impervious area stated in the report is 1,360 square feet, whether on the planet is 1,600 square feet. So there's just a little discrepancy. It still works out in your favor, so you're not required to do a stormwater compliance because you're deducting the impervious area on the property. And that is that for me. Thank you.
A question on your potential future driveway going to the proposed barn. Will that be gravel? Will that be pavement? Will that be asphalt?
Uh, we're talking about my wife and I maybe doing gravel, but it's probably going to probably be asphalt.
You'd have to figure that in your calculations, right, Tatiana?
Yeah.
Bit of that?
Yeah, it's counted as impervious surface, so it doesn't matter if they choose to do gravel or pavement. Yep.
All right. John Mayer, did you have anything to add before we go to the commission?
No, I'm all set.
Is that? Hi? I'm opening it up. Okay, I see Rich Deacon, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a question. It was stated that whether it's gravel or pavement, it still counts as impervious surface?
We do count gravel as impervious surface because it compacts over time, so that it actually acts as impervious and plus oftentimes we've noticed that even though they put gravel in the beginning, it gets paved in a very short period of time, so we're, that's more conservative approach to calculation.
Okay, but we're, we're still able to allow him to put that driveway in?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay. And in terms of the trees, those trees that were taken down, is it likely that those would have been approved by the tree warden or the town engineer for immediate removal?
I have no information on the trees. I have not seen any pictures or documentation. So I can answer that because I don't have any backup.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
On that comment, Richard, when Tatiana and I were out there in November, I honestly don't remember seeing any trees that were cut, but, you know. So like I said, if the applicant can put them on to his plan, we'll, you know, look at it when we do our walk.
Are additional plantings part of that directly because of the cutting? Like, is there a tree mitigation plan that was already in there, or is that?
No, the, the, no, those are just being added.
Okay. But those trees that you caught, those were, you, you said those were very poor health.
Yeah, I had three, one of the main companies being Long Hill came out, and, I mean, hemlocks, they have to be treated constantly, you know, and you could see it when you do your sidewalk, you could see the property line of hemlocks as well, that they're all, I mean, the bear can be and they haven't been treated at all. The ones you had, it's already cracked. I mean, every time a, a storm came, I was getting big limbers coming down and it just, you know, it was, became a danger and you know, insurance was asking, I was asking, and so, I mean, they're, they're, they're dead. It's not, they're not like oak trees or anything like that. I mean, they're, they're small, they were small little eight-inch, nine-inch trees.
I, I need to request, before you speak, if you can just say through the chair so I can recognize you for the record, you know, so I can identify you. Other commissioners? Go ahead, David.
Through the chair. Are there any pictures of this site and the, the border from proposed barn looking towards the wetlands and the pond? Is that something in the package? I did not see any. Looking through it, I did not see any pictures. But typically, we would want more plantings to create a buffer between any structures and the wetlands edge. I know you've got your three green giant arboretis, which provide very limited ecological services and ecological benefit. They're great for screening and the deer don't eat them. But beyond that, they're, they're sort of not very useful. And I see that, you know, you've, there is one deciduous, 18-inch deciduous tree there near the wetlands. You know, I can, I'm going to reserve comment on additional planting until we go out and take a look at the site. But a row of shrubs across that back edge from where the green giants are over to basically where that culvert is, might be something that we would be interested in just as mitigation, filtration, not talking anything huge. You know, probably 10 or 15 plants. But, you know, I'd like to see what the site looks like out there before making any determinations.
Okay, I mean, I could say, I mean, I could send pictures.
Again, you have to say through the chair, sir. It's, Mr. Reardon is speaking now. Go ahead, sir.
Oh, sorry, I could submit pictures or the sidewalk through, whatever is easiest.
Yeah, the sidewalk is fine.
Okay.
The issue we have, Mr. Reardon, is some people are just listening by phone, so they don't see, you know, the videos, so.
Oh, okay.
Other commissioners?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Carmine.
Those hemlocks that were removed, can you approximate where they were on the property?
I mean, they're definitely probably right in front of the, the, the pool chain. I don't know if you can see the chain link fence. They were more in front of that, from the edge of the pool to the, to, to the hemlocks, there's probably 25, 30 feet. Maybe, maybe more.
They were between the house and the pool or in back of the pool?
No, they were in front.
In front of the pool, but, so they were between the house and the pool?
No, they were, they, they were not, they were in front of, they were in front of the barn, nothing, nothing by the house at all, in front of where the pool is.
So kind of where the, the driveway, the new driveway would be, they're in that area?
Yeah, kind of around there. There was, there was, there was a, I mean, a line of, I don't know, maybe, I don't know. Probably, I'm looking at, maybe, I don't know, seven or eight of them, six, but it wasn't, it wasn't all the way across. They were nowhere by the house at all.
Okay, the other question I've got has to do with your application, section two.
Go ahead.
You've mentioned wetland area to be disturbed, zero feet. But then you, on line seven, proposed percentage of wetlands on the property to be disturbed, then you have a figure in there. It, it contradicts itself. And then wetlands area to be disturbed, proposed, what, what, what was the other one? A total area of proposal and disturbance, point 09 acre. Upland review area to be disturbed, point 08. Prop, the wetlands, point 06. Again, the numbers are not adding up. And if if there is wetlands to be disturbed, I don't see where that's on your drawing. So can you explain the difference between the drawing and the application?
Yeah, so there is, there is no wetlands at all being disturbed. It's, it's the upland review area, and I work with Tatiana on, on this, and forget which one it was, but she said that the total, I think it was the total land, Tatiana, that said, go a little bit bigger for any, you know, construction. Obviously, there's no, there's no construction there at all. There's no, no digging, no nothing like that at all. It's just really essentially removing the concrete patios and the, the slabs of the, the pool cabana and the shed.
And that's all outside of the wetlands. It's in the upland review area.
Correct.
Okay.
Then it, it's within the 100-foot setback, correct?
Right, okay. That's it for now, thank you.
All right.
Through the chair.
Anything? Go ahead, David.
Just to corroborate the, the applicant's assertion, the hemlocks, as we know, are afflicted by the woolly hemlock adelgid since the early 1990s, and without, you know, an annual application of arboreal oil, the trees will decline and eventually die. And that's sort of the problem with them, and that is not an uncommon thing, and he's correct in the assertion that, you know, they do require maintenance, and they probably did die. So, just for our own edification.
And for the record, thank you, David. Okay, John, anything from you, sir? Any comments?
No, not right now.
Bob?
No.
At this point, Mr. Chairman, no.
All right, Greg?
Uh, no, Tatiana reviewed the question I had regarding the size of the square footage of the proposed driveway and the barn. It seemed like it was an error. Tatiana went over that already.
All right. So at our next meeting, if you can put on the plan, the trees that were removed, give us a topography plan. And, see, we would be walking this. Tatiana is the 18th, which is a Tuesday. Is that good for you? That's right after President's Day.
Let me check one second, please. Yes, 18th work for me.
Okay, John, I normally ask you to, you know, give us what you want, but the structures are up, so I think and when we walk it, we'll see what's there. Is there anything else from the commission before I?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Carmine.
As we did last time, this is the winter, it's February. I suggest we have an alternate date in the case of inclement weather.
All right, well, it would be the 24th, which is a Monday. Or we could do it on the following Tuesday, which is the 25th. We'll see. As we lucked out on the other application, you know, it snowed, but we were able to still walk it. So when we go to do our walks, that would be it. It'd be on the 18th at 3 o'clock, and if it should snow, it would be the 24th. If it snows, then we'll do the 25th. All right, anything else from the commission? You're good, Tatiana? Anything you want?
I just wanted to note that there appears to be a member of the public with a raised hand, and perhaps they could be advised that this is not a public hearing.
All right. Thank you for that.
Mr., Mr. Reardon, is Barbara Johnson affiliated with you in any way?
No, she's a neighbor, but.
All right. Okay.
She's a, I don't even know, I mean, she, she's a, she's a neighbor of mine, which I know obviously has, has made a complaint. I talked to zoning already, they told her that she was, you know, notified through, through the ZBA application and that she was mailed a, a letter, her husband actually signed a document that's included in my application to zoning, that there's no problem with this whatsoever. But recently, she feels different, so.
All right, well, she can write a letter to the commission or, you know, email. All right, if there's no other comments, we're going to close new business and we will see you on the 18th. I'm assuming you'll be there to greet us.
I was going to ask you if, if I, if you want me there or, I know sometimes.
Yeah, because if there's questions, this way it goes easier rather than, you know, it helps to expedite things for you, all right?
And then can I just have one other question? Tatiana, just through the driveway, what was the revised calculation you came up with so I could adjust that for the driveway?
It's 1,600 square feet according to the plan submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, I need a motion to close new business.
Make a motion to close new business.
Second.
And seconded by Rich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, good night, Mr. and Mr. Reardon and Mr. Reardon Senior.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
All right.
Good night.
All right, we're, we're going to go to old business, which is a public hearing. I'm going to ask, Greg, do you want to read it or should I ask Carmine? Do you have it in front of you?
Yeah, I have one here.
All right, if you can read the notice.
Okay, this notice here. Okay, this notice hereby given that the inland, wetlands and water course commission of the town of Trumbull will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February fourth, two thousand twenty-five at seven P M via video conference. Uh, it's a Zoom, uh, webinar, um, the address is on the website. Uh, or you can join by telephone, again, those numbers are on the website. Uh, application twenty-four thirty-four, um, one-one-one LLC permit approval for construction of a thirty-five thousand three hundred and fifty square foot commercial building with associated driveways and parking grading and planting within a regulated area at One Trefoil Drive. Copy of the application and the maps are on file at town engineering office in the town of Trumbull website. Public comments could have been sent, should have been sent by email, uh, twenty-four hours in advance.
All right, just a slight correction, it's actually Trumbull one-one-one LLC for the record, and, um, all right, let's see, we're all set here, um, I see Attorney Nuff is here, you're going to lead off?
I am, excuse me, I am Mr. Chairman, thank you, uh, for the record, John Nuff, one thirty-five Broad Street, Milford, Connecticut, on behalf of the applicant, Trumbull one-eleven LLC, which is a contract purchaser of the property of One Trefoil Drive, which consists of just under five acres. As you noted, we propose the construction of an attractive mixed-use development, uh, twenty-six thousand square foot upscale grocer, urgent care, and two restaurants. With me this evening are Luke Morrow from Solly Engineering, he's a professional engineer, and also filling in this evening for Bill Kenny is Jackson Smith, who is a wetland scientist. Um, I provided a copy of Jackson's resume, uh, to the record to Tatiana, um, afternoon, um, because this is a public hearing, we have notified that our neighbors, as required by our regulations, and we have provided proof of that mailing uh, in a letter dated January twenty-first to your staff. Um, just to go through a quick history of where, how we got into this, to this evening, uh, since our submission of our application, then I'll turn it over to Luke and Jackson, so as you'll recall, you received this application at your meeting in December, we gave a short presentation, and you had a more substantive, uh, discussion uh, in January that my, uh, partner in Sutens covered. A couple of things happened at that meeting in January, first, you voted to have a public hearing based upon public interest, not because this proposes a significant activity, and that's important, because if it were a significant activity, you would have to make a finding that there are no feasible proven alternatives to approve the application. That is not the case, so you do not need to make a finding of no feasible alternative, and we'll talk about the changes that we made um, at your request, uh, but nonetheless, you don't have to make a specific finding. The second thing that happened after meeting in January is that you received environmental intervention by Attorney Green on behalf of, uh, two of his clients, one of which is Old Mine, which we're as familiar to all of you, because they also oppose of that entity, also oppose the project at forty-eight Monroe Turnpike. Uh, I think we conclude from that, that, um, Old Mine and its principles are not stewards of the environment, they are stewards of their own spite. Nonetheless, twenty-two eight nineteen exists for, uh, whoever it is who wants to avail themselves of that. Um, the intervention is authorized under Connecticut general statutes twenty-two eight nineteen, which requires an allegation, just an allegation that an application proposes conduct that is reasonably likely to cause unreasonable pollution. Couple of things to note, it does not broaden your jur- jurisdiction, you are an inland, wetland and water courses agency, and that's and that is what is within your jurisdiction, the mere filing of the intervention does not expand your jurisdiction over non-wetland or non-water course issues. Um, second, before you vote on the application, whether, I don't think it's gonna take place tonight, but whenever it is that you vote on the application, you should make a determination as to whether or not the proposed activity is in fact reasonably likely to cause unreasonable. And if you make that determination that it is not, and I think we will demonstrate that that is the proper finding, again, you do not need to make a determination that there are no feasible alternatives, so two ways where, where you'd have to make that finding. One is if you determine there was a significant activity, you didn't do that, and then the other one, you still have the option uh, when you vote, to determine that there is no reasonably, reasonable likelihood of unreasonable. Um. Third, um, since, at that meeting, um, in January, we listened to your comments, and again, even though you don't have to make any findings on alternatives, we've incorporated some of those that you suggested. Notably, we have reduced parking and moved the building closer to Route one-eleven, and further from the more meaningful wetland area at the northern edge of the site. And you asked us not to create new wetlands as mitigation on the northern portion of the property in order to maintain the mature vegetation in that area. Third, we have agreed to provide a larger and more meaningful mitigation for the creation of wetlands at Old Mine Park. And just a little bit on the topic of off-site mitigation. And that gets Supreme Court has made it very clear that you have the authority under the general statutes to secure an agreement to provide off-site compensation for the loss of wetlands. Provided the commission has considered the impact of the application on the subject property, I repeat that. By the commission considers the impact of the application on the subject property. So, I mean, really what they're saying, I'm quoting from Supreme Court case, what they're saying is, if we are to create the most beautiful set of wetlands on the park and doing something horrific at our site, that's not a basis for you to our application, that is not the case here. Um, our application stands on its own, it deserves to be approved on its own, but in addition, we are willing to accept a condition of, uh, providing mitigation at the park, uh, as compensation for the loss of wetlands on our property. And you'll hear from Luke and Jackson about how the filling of the wetlands that we propose are, um, low quality and really perform no function other than to advance the stormwater. Um, the other thing that we'll be doing with regard to this off-site mitigation is giving you sufficient detail to ensure that the environmental consequences have been evaluated fairly, that's another important component, uh, via the Supreme Court. We want to make sure that we give you enough information, actually, we will looking at to file an application, the mitigation work at the park. Nonetheless, we're gonna give you enough information so that you feel comfortable that this is adequate mitigation for the filling that we're doing on our own property. And then the last thing I'll mention is that since January, we have provided a memo responding to the comments of the intervenors engineer, Steve Trinkus. That memo is authored by Luke Morrow dated Ja- January twentieth, um, along with revisions to the plans, um, that we've made in response to, uh, the, um, Trinkus memo. We also received another memo, uh, authored by Mr. Trinkus this afternoon, which is largely, if not entirely redundant with the memo that we received, uh, previously. Most important about the two memos that you received from Mr. Trinkus. They do not allege any specific harm to any specific resource. Repeat that, they do, it does, they do not allege any specific, specific harm to any specific resource. Rather, the claims are entirely speculative and do not meet the substantial evidence test that requires specific evidence that an application is likely to have an actual adverse impact on resource areas. And we can talk about that more a little bit, um, there's plenty in case law on what doesn't qualify, but generalized speculation and generalized concerns does not meet the substantial evidence test and does not form a reasonable basis for, uh, the denial of an application. And the last thing I'll say before I turn it over to Luke is that, um, this is our third night before use, but I would simply know for the record that, you know, everything that we've done to date, all the materials that we've submitted from the very beginning, uh, should be incorporated into the record, um, even though the public hearing is up. With that, I want to turn it over to Luke Morrow.
Okay, can everyone hear me, and can everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, for the record, uh, my name is Luke Morrow, I'm a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, uh, also professional traffic operations engineer, I work with Solly Engineering, uh, office at five oh one Main Street in Monroe, Connecticut. And as John stated, we're here tonight representing the applicant, which is Trumbull one-one-one LLC. Okay, so, um, just wanna go through for the record, um, of the presentation in full, uh, so that it's clear. Uh, then we'll also go through as we're going through the presentation, changes, uh, current, current proposal before you, along with the changes that were made along the way. So, uh, again, for the record, our property is a single five acre, uh, it's a single five acre property uh, located within the IL zone in the town of Trumbull. Uh, it's located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Route one-eleven, which is Monroe Turnpike and Trefoil Drive, uh, it is also bound on the west side by a mix of industrial and office-related uses. Currently on site, there is a twenty-nine thousand eight hundred square foot, uh, industrial, um, building. Um, it's occupied by the U.S. Sign and Fabrication Corporation, and although not completely striped, there are about a hundred parking spaces on the property, access is currently provided by a singular means, uh, unsignalized off of Trefoil Drive. And just zooming in a little bit closer, um, there are a total of point one, zero point one five acres of wetlands on the site um, with one point five five acres of associated upland review area on the property. So, the proposal, the current proposal, uh, before everyone tonight is for the construction of a thirty-five thousand three hundred and fifty square foot uh, commercial development, which includes, uh, large-scale grocer, uh, and urgent care, and two smaller restaurants with one hundred and ninety-two total parking spaces. Uh, access would be provided via a full movement signalized access drive in the southwest corner from Monroe Turnpike, uh, and also a secondary unsignalized full movement access from Trefoil Drive, which is mainly for uh, truck routes for trucks exiting the property. Uh, in total, there are one thousand four hundred and forty-four square feet of wetlands, uh, in the form of really a drainage ditch, um, becomes wetlands over time, and essentially it was, uh, a drainage ditch to, um, uh, to carry runoff from Route one-eleven, um, uh, which would be billed as part of this property to, uh, as part of this product, sorry, to account for the construction of a new, uh, access driveway and associated parking for the property. Uh, overall, um, we are now, uh, proposing the creation of about point zero one or about five hundred fifty square feet of wetlands to the small pocket of the southwest corner of the site. Um, and overall, there are one point one acres within the upland review area to be disturbed as part of this proposal. And just for comparison sake. Here we go, um, just provided a comparison of what's currently proposed on the left to what was uh, initially proposed as part of our current application, which is shown on the right. I highlighted the main changes in blue for everyone for ease of understanding, but, uh, essentially the, our original proposal, uh, included two hundred and one total parking spaces, uh, the, the new plan proposes a total of one hundred and ninety-two spaces, um, the, the spaces, one row of parking spaces along the building frontage uh, was eliminated, uh, and the drive aisle in front of the building was reduced from thirty down to twenty-four feet, so that we can provide an additional, uh, fifteen feet or so, um, of, um, separation between the wetlands on the north side of the site and the limits of disturbance, uh, on the north side of the property as well. Um, the new, uh, um, separation between the wetland on the north side and the limited disturbance is just about twenty-three feet. Um. In, in, uh, uh, along with that, um, there was the previously proposed expansion of the wetland area on the north side of the property that was proposed to offset the impact of, uh, filling in that drainage ditch along the, uh, south side of the property. However, based on numerous conversations and site visit, um, it was the request of the commission that we um, move forward with what we'll call an alternate to, um, generally save as much mature vegetation on the property as we could, rather than, um, uh, tearing down, uh, some good mature trees to expand the wetland in order to mitigate uh, a somewhat, um, valueless, if you will, or not, not very valuable, uh, drainage ditch along the front of the property. Um, in, uh, in addition, so the, the initial proposal included the disturbance of one point four nine acres within the upland review area, which has now been reduced to one point one acres, so a total net reduction of zero point three nine acres, um, within the upland review area itself. We've also added some snow storage areas on the plan as requested by the commission, um, provided some fencing and uh, and guide, guide rail callouts for fall protection along the retaining walls as well. Moving on to the grading drainage plan, um, this is the current proposal in front of everyone tonight. Uh, grading was designed to, uh, in this, in the detention was designed to kind of mimic the existing drainage patterns uh, on the site. The majority of the building and parking areas will drain into an underground detention system, which is located in the northeast corner of the property, that will, um, function to both attenuate runoff and al- also provide, uh, stormwater quality mechanism before discharging uh, ultimately to the system within Trefoil Drive. There is also a small portion of the site, um, the main drive aisle in the southwest corner, uh, that has its own small separate um, stormwater management system that would discharge to the wetland, um, in the southwest corner of the site, mainly because, uh, for grading to allow, uh, gravity flow. Um, and that will also, um, uh, that is als- that also includes, um, a, uh, the filling of the wellings, I'm sorry, uh, would be replaced by a, uh, twelve-inch drainage pipe that would convey run, convey the runoff from Route one-eleven, uh, via pipe flow into the wetland pocket in southwest corner rather than the open drainage channel that currently exists today. Um, overall, the design, uh, includes enhanced water quality measures, as there's no formal water quality features on the site or, uh, detention facilities on the site as it exists today. It does result in a net reduction in the stormwater runoff from the property, uh, significant, uh, increase to the water quality or improvement to the water quality um, compared to existing conditions that exist today. Um, we would note, the detention system in the northeast corner has also been designed to, um, retain one hundred percent of the site's required water quality volume, which is also referred to as the required, um, um, retention volume for the property. So, it is our professional opinion that this design is in accordance with Trumbull regulations, and also the twenty-twenty-four Storm Order, Connecticut Storm Water Quality Manual, and also the, the two thousand, uh, Connecticut DOT Drainage Manual. So I did wanna provide a quick, uh, comparison of drainage, grading drainage plan. Uh, left is what's currently proposed, right again is what was previously or initially submitted, uh, for review, um, by the commission, uh, ultimately, um, as we had stated, there was, um, um, there was a request to provide, um, or maintain as much existing vegetation, a mature vegetation in the property as possible, therefore, your notice, we've, uh, eliminated um, the significant amount of grading, uh, wetlands expansion on the north side of the property here. We've also peeled back the graded slope on the western side of the property in order to maintain uh, an additional, uh, almost point four acres of mature, uh, vegetated tree cover. Um, and we did that in the form of some small retaining walls, um, and pulling the development footprint further away from that northern wetland. Um, uh, overall, the, the, um, retaining wall on the north side of the property was reduced from about fifteen feet high maximum to about a ten-foot-high wall. Um, and also, um, based on requests from town staff, we did provide a three small, um, bio-retention rain garden areas, which you can see in these three small circles located throughout the parking lot, um, those were provided as a means to, of, of providing uh, some low-impact development mechanisms, as was requested by, by Tatiana, that we could incorporate into this project. Um, I just did wanna go through, um, and I'm sure it's gonna be mentioned several times tonight, but uh, our interpretation of the, the Connecticut twenty, twenty-twenty-four Connecticut Storm Water Quality Manual, I'll try not to bore everybody, but just kind of highlight, um, high level, um, what it states and what we. What it states and what we use as the. The basis of our design. You'll note here, table four point two. From the Stormwater Quality Manual indicates that for new developments. Which although the site is currently developed, it doesn't meet the requirement or the definition of a new development because. The existing impervious coverage in sight. Doesn't quite hit that threshold, so we're required to meet. The requirements of a new development, which. Maintains that we provide retention volume. Calculated at one hundred percent of the site's water quality volume. And then if that's provided, no additional treatment volume is required. And the water quality volume is essentially calculated at about. One point three inches of rain over the entire impervious coverage of the property. And then I'll just note. Next page refers to table eight point one. Which basically provides a number of suitable mechanisms to provide. BMPs in order to facilitate. What the state is looking for in terms of hitting that one hundred percent. Water quality volume and the required retention volume for the project. But you'll note here, if you can read the screen, it does say. Infiltration BMPs are preferred for meeting the stormwater retention performance criteria. Because they also recharge groundwater, so they have several functions that improve. Stormwater quality rate of runoff control, but also enhance stormwater quality measures and groundwater recharge. So I'll go to further out of the document. We'll refer to table four point three. Which notes the annual pollutant load reductions that are required for new or redevelopment retrofits. No, only needed when additional stormwater treatment is needed. I'll just note everyone's point, a couple of highlights here, I wanted to kind of point out. However, it is important to note that if the full retention goal or the required retention volume is met. It is assumed pollutant load reduction is achieved and individual pollutant calculations are not necessary. Also, a proposed stormwater management system meets or exceeds these average annual pollutant load reductions. When the required retention volume is retained on site. Using suitable stormwater retention practices. Refer to figure eight point one. So ultimately, we refer to table eight point one from the Stormwater Quality Manual, which I have a snippet for you here. You'll note the big red arrow indicates that our underground infiltration system. On the northeast corner of the site. Provides a suitable mechanism in the form of. Retention for volume reduction. Infiltration groundwater recharge and treatment of pollutants. And also for peak runoff attenuation as well. Does note that pre-treatment is required, which is in the column. The bundled column above. And it does note that deep sump, put-in-catch basins. And proprietary pre-treatment devices, which are our stormwater swirl chambers. Are. Effective and suitable means of pre-treatment as noted by the green teardrop or raindrop here. So it is our professional opinion. Based on the guidance provided in the twenty twenty-four Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual. That we do. We do meet the intent and are in compliance with this manual based on the revised materials. In form of plans and also the stormwater management report that's been provided for. And then just want to go through soil erosion center controls. Quickly, we did provide a two-phased SEC plan for review. First phase involves the demolition of onsite pavement. And structures and also utility infrastructure and also rough grading. And then also a second phase of the soil erosion center control plan for. The finalized construction and site work to take place on the property. The measures do include a construction entrance. Material stockpile areas, temporary diversion swales and sediment traps. Silt fence. As required along rating limits and also inlet protection for the catch basin structures. And we do note that all these measures are designed in accordance with the twenty twenty-four. Connecticut Guidelines for Soil and Sediment Control, Soil Erosion Center Control, sorry. Briefly run through the utility plans. All the utilities on site, existing utilities on site, were likely going to be demolished. As part of the project, so we're proposing a new public utility services all emanating. From Trefoil Drive to both the east and the north side of the property. It was a request that we show the grease waste receptacles within the dumpster area. Dumpster enclosure area, which we have done as requested by the commission. In terms of landscape plan. The disturbed areas along all site driveways will be reseeded for erosion control means and also to bring back vegetation to any disturbed areas. That are kind of. Disturbed during construction. There are a mix of plantings proposed within the parking lot. The goal, however, with this. With this revised site plan submission was to maintain as much of the existing. Vegetation as possible. Again, we were able to maintain an additional. Zero point three nine acres of mature vegetated forest area on the property. And of course, our goal is always to hit eighty percent. Of native species with our planting selections. So we did work with the commission, obtained comments, we did refine. Some of the plantings that were requested throughout the parking lot and also along the perimeter of the parking lot as well. There are a number of buffer plantings proposed along. The north and the west sides of the parking lot. These are here to help maintain the existing vegetated buffer that's going to be trimmed back during construction. And also help naturalize these forested areas over time. Again, a quick comparison of what was previously approved, sorry, previously proposed. As part of our initial submission, which is shown on the right. Our current landscape plan shown on the left and just to direct everyone's attention again. To the north and the west side of the property showing. A significant decrease in the removal of existing mature vegetated area. In terms of grading. And. New plantings proposed in those two areas. We did provide a tree removal plan, as was mentioned in the site walk. Based on our estimates, the latest plan costs for the removal of about ninety trees. Of eight-inch caliber or greater with just within the upland review area on the site, however. We were able to maintain a significant amount of that existing vegetation. By making some of these revisions that were discussed for our site plan. Set. We are. Aiming to mitigate the removal of these plantings through. A number of both tree and shrub plantings. Along the perimeter of the parking area and also. At the off-site mitigation at Old Mine Park, which Jackson will discuss shortly. And then before I hand it over to Jackson, I just want to. Just go over a quick sketch we provided along with a brief. Offsite mitigation memo that was provided for the record. This is just an aerial view of Old Mine Park. You'll note Old Poller Rock Pond. Within, on the north side of the screen here, just off the northwest side, if you're familiar with the park. Is the bridge over the river into Old Rock Pond and there's an open field on the north side here. During the flooding that occurred back in August. Of twenty twenty-four, there were some significant erosion. Issues resulting from kind of a breach of the dam, if you want to call it. Or the the bridge abutment here where Old Rock Pond comes back. Punnels back down to the aquatic river, so. The town of Trumbull does have a plan to. Do some erosion control and flood prevention measures. At the park here, however, we think it would be in counter with that, we think it would be appropriate. To provide about four thousand square feet of off-site mitigation. As well to help. Both enhance the quality. Of the runoff, improve the stormwater quality of the runoff from that parking area. In the form of a wetland mitigation area and also provide a more robust vegetated buffer. That would enhance the wetlands themselves. And with that, I will pass it over to Jackson to talk through. Some of the. Mitigation measures.
Yeah, thank you, Luke. I'm Jackson Smith, I'm an ecologist for William Kenny Associates located at eighteen ninety-nine. Bronson Road in Fairfield, Connecticut. And just to give a quick recap of our firm's role in the project. Our firm was retained to identify and delineate the onsite wetlands and watercourses. This work was completed by myself and the owner of our firm, who you're familiar with, Bill Kenny. Who is a registered soil scientist in the state of Connecticut. During our investigation, which we completed in late August of twenty twenty-four. We identified and delineated two inland wetland and watercourse systems. The first system was located in the northern portion of the site. And it's a small, isolated, depressional woodland wetland. The wetland is a relatively low to moderate quality. It's small in size and it does contain some invasive vegetation. However, its depressional nature allows for some wetland functions to take place. Such as modification of groundwater recharge. As well as storm and floodwater storage and modification of water quality. The second system was located in the southwestern portion of the property. And that's primarily a man-made, small drainage ditch. Which extends and flows east to west through that southwestern portion of the site. And it eventually culminates with a small depressional wetland in that very southwestern corner. This system is of relatively low quality. Primarily, it's a man-made and channelized water course. Which its primary function is stormwater conveyance of surface water flows across. Monroe Turnpike that are captured and discharged to this location. Within the channel itself, there's very little wetland vegetation. And the steep sloping nature of that water course. Means that when there's water moving through it, it's moving through very quickly. And as such, there's not many opportunities. For wetland functions like the modification of water quality or groundwater recharge or discharge. Nor the contribution to abundance and diversity of wetland flora and fauna. So the primary function of that system is just water conveyance from the stormwater that's captured along Route one eleven. And afterwards, the stormwater enters another subsurface pipe. Which is located just offsite, I believe, to the west of us. And the water runs through that pipe and continues offsite. Following our investigation, we worked with the project team. To assist and provide insight regarding this commercial redevelopment. As it relates to inland wetland and watercourse impacts. As currently proposed, the project will fill about fourteen hundred square feet of this southwestern drainage channel. Which is necessary to facilitate access to the site from Monroe Turnpike. The stormwater that's currently directed to the system is proposed to be rerouted around the access drive. And then re-enter that southwestern wetland area at a different inletting location. And that water will be treated via the stormwater management measures. That Luke described, which is something that's not occurring now for the stormwater running off Route one eleven. Additionally proposed in that area is the creation of about five hundred and fifty square feet. Of wetlands near the. Western end of that water course. And the control of invasive vegetation that is currently present within the wetlands. The project employs standard inadequate sediment and erosion controls as well as stormwater management measures. Which Luke just briefed us on, which will prevent indirect adverse impacts to. Both of the onsite wetland systems by preventing sediment transport during construction. As well as treating and managing. The stormwater post-construction when those facilities are in place. So due to the installation, use and maintenance of these features. And seeing as the primary function of that southwestern water course will be provided for. We find that the proposed project, while causing some direct disturbance to this low-quality man-made wetland. Will ultimately not adversely affect the wetland systems and its primary functions. Of stormwater conveyance will be maintained. At this point, I'm just gonna. That's a brief overview of what we did and how we're involved in the project. I can give it back to John if you wanted to do any introduction on mitigation, or I could get right into it.
Jackson, in the interest of time, why don't you go ahead and talk about the offsite mitigation?
Yep. So. The applicant is proposing to create and enhance wetlands in their buffers along the. Pickwannock, I don't know if that's right, but the Pickwannock River. At Old Mine Park as depicted on this sketch here. That red box gives a rough location of where this mitigation would take place. And also on that figure, I sketched in the approximate wetland boundary and the approximate. Hundred-foot wetland buffer, so you get a sense of what's going on. In that protected buffer as well as in the wetland itself. Currently, the area is a good functioning class-one stream. However, as you can see, the wetland buffer, which is right next to it, is primarily. Both lawn, asphalt and ornamental plantings. So the applicant is proposing to enhance the wetland buffer and as well as create some wetlands along that area. And Luke, if you go to the next slide, thank you, there's, this is a preliminary. Plan, obviously, as to the main goals and objectives of what will actually take place during that mitigation. But I think of most importance is how it relates to improving the supporting. The functions and values of the wetland and its buffer. And we find that there were five main functions and values that will be improved by this proposed mitigation. First and. Of primary importance is the modification of water quality. Currently, there's runoff from this parking lot, which flows downstream to the river and it flows right over. That ornamental grass that's there. And the current lawn vegetation is pretty short-rooted and doesn't provide the same level of biofiltration. That some native species would, so the installation of. Native ground covers and shrubs to this buffer area. Would primarily assist in bio-filtering surface water flows from the parking lot and surrounding area to the stream. By capturing and treating potential pollutants before they enter that river there. The second. Function and value that we find this would provide. Is the contribution to the abundance and diversity of wetland flora and fauna. As mentioned, it's lawn and it's ornamental plantings right now, which aren't. The best when it comes to providing functions for, you know, wildlife that are around the area. So the installation of native grasses, forbs and shrubs in this area. Will provide additional opportunities for native fauna to graze and forage. And on a smaller scale, it's providing and promoting opportunities for native insects. And that works its way up the food chain to be consumed by fish or peto-fauna, avian species and what have you there. The third function that we think this is providing is stream bank stabilization. As you know, this area was pretty eroded from the heavy rains that we had in August. And so, you know, stabilizing the string banks, which were weakened during the August twenty-four floods. As well as stabilizing the adjacent area will both directly and indirectly benefit. This water course and its channelized nature. Additionally, there's non-consumptive education values that will be promoted by this. And what those are defined as by the Army Corps is basically the effectiveness of a wetland. And associated water course to provide active and passive recreational opportunities. And consider the effectiveness of a wetland. and consider the effectiveness of a wetland as a site for a outdoor classroom. And so this is a a very accessible public park site, which is close to the parking lot. You have a good class-one stream already running through the area, and I think this would provide a a great visual opportunity to look at what a native naturalized, high-quality wetland buffer looks like when compared to something that's right next to it of a lower-quality lawn buffer. And I think that can highlight the diversity um of that's and the benefits provided by native plantings. And then the the fifth um function and value that we find this will provide is visit visual and aesthetic quality and usefulness, and I think this one's pretty self-explanatory. But again, we're in a in a public park situation. This has the potential to be viewed by a lot of different people. Um, and so I think enhancing this area and promoting awareness for how these buffers and and wetlands function is something that can be achieved here. So. Yep.
To the chair.
Great, thanks, Jackson. Uh, just a few things, just a few things to note, uh, what's that?
Um, attorney enough, John, uh, Laura has a quick question.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, they mistitled that uh is not the Fall Rock uh, that's the old mark, Old Mine Park swimming hole that I swam in when I was a kid. And it's pronounced Piquanik, okay? And I was on the Piquanik uh initiative board back in the early two thousand. It's not in fact, but it's pronounced Piquanik, and that has nothing to do with Fall Rock Park. Okay, continue, please. I'm also a historian in town, and that would bother me to start calling things wrong, like we never had any casual Indians. Everyone thinks we did. Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you for the correction. Uh, and just a few things to note, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, before we conclude. Everything that that Luke has talked about this evening that's in the PowerPoint, that is already the plans that have been submitted and reviewed by uh staff and presumably by Attorney Green and his engineer. Um, I think the last two slides that Jackson used are new, but um, I don't know how substantive they were, but, you know, we'll include those for the record as well. Um, clearly, the offsite mitigation is providing far better value than the uh value provided by the drainage dish that we're filling, and we're doing it about a three to four to one ratio. Um, one of the things that Luke went into some detail about is compliance with the two thousand four stormwater manual, and the reason why he did that is because what we see in Mr. Trinkus' memo is the unsupported allegation that we do not comply with that manual. In fact, that we do, and I mean, so there's some sort of, you know, Luke was kind enough to show us the graph, and Mr. Trinkus provides his own uh sort of opinion of what that graph shows, which is directly contradictory to the graph and to the the manual. So we want to make certain that the commission is aware that we are in full compliance with the with the stormwater manual, and I would note that the case law would tell you that compliance with an established protocol or um, you know, environmental issues is demonstration that it is not a uh unreasonable pollution. So that was an important uh discussion point by Luke, because it directly refutes the um, the notes from Mr. Trinkus. Uh, that's all we have. I assume the commission's gonna have some questions. I know we're gonna hear from Attorney Green, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, if you can do me a favor and uh remove that, so I can see the full commission again. All right, I'm gonna ask the commission, do you wanna ask questions, or would you rather let Attorney Green do his presentation, then we can go to questioning. There's anybody that has a a question? Go ahead, uh, Rich Deacon.
Thank you. Um, perhaps this is a question either uh the one of the applicants can answer, or perhaps Commissioner Verespi. Uh, it was mentioned that there are eighty percent native species uh being proposed. Um, but to inquire why that was not one hundred percent, generally, we prefer native species native to Southern New England.
I it's a Assuming that can be corrected, Luke?
Yeah, I can, you know, I I don't know if I know Mary Blackburn, I believe, from my team. I I don't know if she can be promoted to a panelist, I believe she's on, and she may have a more substantive answer than I can provide.
Thank you.
There there are some non-native species that provide good ecological value.
David Verespi, go ahead.
Sorry, through the chair, David Verespi speaking. Um, there eighty percent is a good quantity. In a commercial development like this, you are going to want some non-native species, some ornamentals, just to make the place look good, uh, whereas some native species aren't gonna give you that pop value um for the aesthetic concern. Plus, some of the non-native species do have um ecological value, um, like some of the crab apples and some of the, they've got Cortegas in here, um, which have berries which the birds eat. So, you know, it's it's not a requirement to have a hundred percent, um, and that would be an onerous requirement, in my opinion.
Okay, I guess the concern was, when you hear non-native, you think invasive.
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
I further record um through the chair, isn't Mary Blackburn was solely engineering?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so Mary Blackburn was solely engineering, um, a registered landscape architect in the state of Connecticut. Uh, so I I would just second Mr. Verespi's comments, um, you know, in certain areas. Um, you know, natives may not be the best choice um for a hundred percent natives. We always strive for eighty percent. And um, and yes, native, non-native does not mean invasive. So um, there are many non-native plants that are not invasive.
Okay.
And I think as we get closer to the wetland boundaries and any areas that are adjacent to the wetlands and being used as buffer plantings or mitigation plantings, those should probably be, you know, closer to one hundred percent. Um, and then you get into some arguments with native ours, which are cultivars of natives, and are they truly native, or are they um, non-natives, but, you know, if they're they're doing a good job with their plant mix.
All right, anything else, uh, Rich? You good?
I'll save the comments about conservation for later. Thanks.
All right. Um, any other comments from the uh commission before we go to Attorney Green?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, David.
I've got a number of questions. Um, first, I'd like to start with um soil scientist. I for um, forget what his name was. Um, the the wetland system in the front of the property, um, you described that as a man-made ditch. So basically, what the assertion is, is that this is not a natural system. It's not a natural stream bed, and it probably did not exist in this location prior to the development of Route one eleven, but was may have ended up there as a result of development activities. Would that be correct?
Yes, sir, Jackson Smith. Um, and and for the record, I am not a certified soil scientist. Um, but my conclusions that I'm presenting here tonight, um, and the delineation that I did was with Bill Kenny, who is a certified soil scientist. Um, but more so to your point, yes, that that system, it's not a natural stream bed or stream that you would find. It's been channelized more and more over time, just with directed stormwater from Monroe Turnpike. Um, but we we find that that system was created uh by the piping of the stormwater management system along Route one eleven out to that pinpoint location.
So this isn't like a pristine stream that's been there since, you know, the beginning of time?
Not not by any means, no.
Okay. Um, maybe you can speak to the values of the ecosystem, the ecological services that it's offering, and utilization of this um wetland area by the um species in the area.
Yes, sir. Yep, Jackson Smith. Um, so so overall, I mean, we are in a commercial area. So most of the species we're looking at are generalist species, whether that be uh mammals and avian species. And I'd say those two categories of of small mammals, um, and avian species are the primary two that are utilizing this area. This the stream itself, um, which is very deep, there's really no vegetation in there. Um, and it only holds water for those larger storm events when it passes through. So the stream itself is is not used as a as a drinking source or as a continuous source of water for those species. Um, and I'd say the the most, if you wanna look at just the wetland area itself, uh, the most valuable area would be that area down at the base of the hill, which we're preserving and enhancing and adding some square footage too. Um, and so that area, just like the rest of the woods around it, would be used by those generalist species for primarily foraging. Um, but but overall, we don't find that there's a super-high um ecological value to that area. It's in a developed zone. Um, it is subject to invasive plant species and and does have trash and and runoff in it. Um, so, yeah.
So it's it's a it's a non-natural system that isn't giving us a lot of value.
That is, that is correct. Yes, I think it would be. Yes, human, it it's it's more so wetland soils that have been formed in human-altered deposits just from years and years of of water coming down that way and saturating that low area, um, which those would be your aquian soil classes.
Okay. Um, I've got some questions for for Luke and Mary. Um, Luke, the, looking at your existing conditions survey, you didn't note, you didn't have identify any existing trees on the entire property. Um, and I noticed along the north side of the property uh to the east of the existing wetlands, I noticed this on our site walk, there were several large, what appeared to be honey locusts along the road. Um, A, you're not identifying those trees to be as to be removed. Um, it looks like maybe one of them needs to be removed for the driveway, but there are several others that either need to be identified as trees to be removed, or better, can we keep those trees in lieu of adding new plantings to take, you know, doesn't make sense to take out trees to put trees back if they're healthy, mature trees there. Um, and if you could speak to that, and then in the revised version of the plan, you took out all of the planting that was around the north wetland. Um, and you did lower the wall along that side, but what has resulted in now is that there is no screening of that ten-foot-tall wall. And I think the commission would like to see plantings along the base of that wall that would sort of mitigate its height, mitigate its impact. It might even provide some some limited area for for birds and and whatnot. Um, smaller trees like Shadow Serviceberry or larger Viburnums and maybe even a a couple of other more shade trees like Red Maples or something that could be put in front of that wall. So as you come up Trefoil Drive, you're not gonna look across that wetland and see a ten-foot-tall wall, but you would see, you know, a bank of, you would see the wall filtered through a bank of plantings, um, and it would sort of mitigate the impact of that wall. Um, so if we could talk about that, um, and I'm curious, uh, Jackson, sorry to go back to you, I'm bouncing around a little bit. Um, for the mitigation area, I'm curious to see what the plan for that would be. Um, I'm a little worried of that becoming sort of a backwater um and getting filled with road sand or whatnot coming off that parking lot, and then just sort of becoming a backwater over time and, you know, losing its value. So we need to have some sort of, you know, con re-contouring planting plan done for it, and maybe even some way of, you know, a high-water overflow that would bring water from the the main pond area to the top of that wetland system to flush it out on a regular basis. But um, that's for you guys to figure out, not me.
So I I can, I can um address the first, the first and maybe part of the second, and then I'll defer to Mary's expertise, but uh, yes, that would be to maintain on the north side of the proposed driveway connection to Trefoil to maintain um those existing trees as we've we've peeled back um the graded slope that was originally proposed um in that area. So, yes.
Right, those trees should be shown on the survey.
That's, that's fine. We can denote, we can update and denote that um as requested. Um, and then secondly, um, and this is where I'll defer to Mary, but I do know at the bottom of the proposed retaining wall, those slopes are fairly steep, probably at around two to one uh slope, so um, I just, I don't know how successful um it would be for plantings to to thrive there. It's not my area of expertise, but Mary, if you wanna maybe opine um, you know, on the ability to provide some plantings on the bottom of that retaining wall on the north side.
And for the record, that was Luke Morrow that was just speaking. Did you wish to comment, uh, Ms. Blackburn?
Yes, uh, please, the chair, this is again Mary Blackburn with solely engineering. So that slope is um currently proposed through the limit of disturbance all along the downhill side of that wall as a um Nomo seed mix. Uh, as Luke said, I believe it's a two-to-one slope. Um, planting it may pose a challenge just to, you know, I wouldn't want to increase the limit of disturbance to plant trees along there, cuz there is um the existing wetland pocket has some um actually quite a bit of a wooded area. So that was kind of the intent there with just providing the seed mix.
All right, I have a question. Let's go back to uh Luke. Um, on the honey uh locusts, I believe they were called. Would they be remaining, or would they be removed?
The the, I think the intent would be to to maintain as many as possible, but but understood we will depict them on the plans to call out specifically which ones are to maintain.
Because I think that's what you said during our last walk.
We will, yeah, we'll do.
All right. Anything else, uh, David?
Yeah, I, um, Luke, I see that you had provided the commission with an alternate plan that does not impact the front wetlands. Um, thank you for providing that. Can you explain to the commission and to the public as to why this plan was not chosen and the benefits, attractions, et cetera?
Sure, yeah. So part of our initial um application, we did show uh an alternate that um shifted the main access drive uh along Route one eleven kind of towards the center of the site to avoid uh direct uh filling of that drainage that's there. Um, that that wasn't deemed to be feasible nor prudent um in that case, because one um uh of the proximity uh it would place uh of an entrance to the intersection of Route one eleven and Trefoil Drive, uh, not good engineering practice to provide um intersections uh in that close proximity to each other. Generally, we're looking for a five-hundred-foot separation. Um, so that in concert with the fact that there's already an existing traffic signal uh where we're proposing to to uh show our access to Route one eleven uh inherently made uh sense uh from a traffic safety perspective, um, which, you know, in my opinion, is what DOT uh ultimately is gonna wanna see. So one one for means of of safety uh accessing and engaging the site from Route one eleven, and also from a truck um truck flow uh perspective around the site, um, putting the uh access drive in the center uh of the site uh uh from Route one eleven. Um, uh prohibits the ability for a full-size tractor-trailer to traverse around uh the front of the site and then through uh and along uh the back of the site to where the uh truck well is located and then off the property. So um both from a safety perspective and then also from a uh feasibility perspective for truck deliveries uh and larger vehicles, um, that was not determined to be feasible or prudent.
Thanks, Luke. And you know, I I think it's important to remind the commission that there is a lot of case law on feasible and prudent alternatives, and there are many instances where there are alternatives of no filling of any wetland, but they are deemed to be, in this case, not feasible or not prudent. Prudent is economically and otherwise reasonable and by the social benefits to be derived. Oh, there was a, there was a case, I'll give you it for instance, where there's a subdivision proposed, and there was where there's a subdivision proposed and there was an opportunity to not fill any wetlands, but the subdivision road that would access those lots would take this sort of meandering path. Court agreed with the commission that that was not prudent, that the filling of wetlands and the mitigation of that filling in a meaningful way was prudent because it afforded, you know, a regular, a regular series of lots as compared to sort of this irregularly shaped and very odd subdivision. So just to conclude, merely filling wetlands does not prove that something is not feasible or prudent. In this case, the filling of that wetlands or the not filling ones is not a prudent alternative because of the oddity of having a curb cuts located in close proximity to the existing traffic.
And and just, you know, to add to.
Excuse me, one moment, Luke. For the record, that was a turning off. Go ahead, Luke.
Yeah, for the record, again, Luke Morrow from solely engineering. You know, I think we've, you know, we've, we've made our, our claims also that the wetland area, although it's a defined wetland, it's really, it's really a drainage ditch, man-made, you know, ditch that was formed over time, doesn't have a high function, doesn't have a high, high value as as Jackson and Bill Kenny have also previously described. What we're essentially doing is taking what is pipe flow from Route 111 through an open channel back to pipe flow on the south side, on the southwest side of the property and basically taking pipe flow from open channel flow to just straight, straight pipe flow. So we're, we're technically maintaining the existing function of that wetland system through the replacement via a 12-inch drainage pipe. So considering the low function and value of that wetland, we determined this to be the what is presented tonight to be the most feasible and and prudent means of providing access to this property.
Right. So just one last question on the the alternative that you provided.
David Verespi speaking for the record.
Sorry, for the record. The alternative you provided would create a hazardous traffic condition. Would that be the case?
That's correct.
Just in layman's terms, simply, we said a lot of stuff there.
Yes.
It wouldn't be good. It would create a hazardous traffic condition that we don't want to create.
Correct. Yep, in terms of accident potential and queuing backups through the intersection. Yes.
Yes, thank you. That's it for me for now.
All right, thank you, David. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, at what point do we hear Tatiana's opinion and John's opinion on revised plan? Is after we listen to Joel Green's presentation or before?
What do you wish Tatiana? Because I know the problem that she has is that, you know, we did get the letter today from the engineer, Mr. Trinkus, and I don't know if she's had a chance to really review that. But what are your thoughts, Tatiana? Do you want to comment now?
It's up to the commission. Happy to tip in now, but we have provided staff comments this afternoon. So hopefully everyone received them. I'm not going to go into detail because most of them are really engineering comments. They do not pertain to wetlands per se. But I think in summary, the town can state that once those comments are addressed to town satisfaction, then the proposal will be in full compliance with the town regulations and 2024 Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual. So I'm going to keep it brief in terms of offsite remediation. I think we will work very closely with our Parks Department if that is the path that the commission would like to go forward with. And that's all I'm going to say, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Tatiana. Any questions before, let's see, Luke, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Luke Morrow again for the record. I just want to reiterate that we we did, or state for the record, we did receive Tatiana's comments this afternoon. We did also talk with her briefly. There's nothing in her comments that we we see any issues in addressing. Some of them, as she, most of them are engineering related. A lot of them have to do with construction-related issues as well. So we're more than happy to provide written response with with some additional clarifications to those, to those comments. But nothing we see in her comments would have a significant change to our, our design as, as a.
Mr. Chairman, those comments, yeah, Bob, for your notes, comments, Mr. Morrow, it's a conditions approval.
So, sorry, say again?
Those, you just mentioned certain things that would be included in the proposal. That will be included in the conditions of approval.
Yeah, yes, a lot, a lot of them we would have to, because some of them are related to construction permits. Some are related to Connecticut DOT drainage coordination items, but yes, we would be.
And that will be included.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Rich.
This is a question for Tatiana or perhaps yourself. Did the engineering office ever determine that this application had to go to Southwest Conservation?
We don't typically make that determination. And we didn't see that would trigger that review.
Overall, I, you know, basically incidental as to what was being done on the, you know, the highway. So, no, it wasn't a request or thought we had, so.
I guess I'm asking, did anyone request it? Did the intervenor request it? Okay, that's fine. Thanks.
All right, any other comments, questions before we go to Attorney Green? All right. Attorney Green, it's all yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Joel Green. I appear before you on behalf of the intervenor, 720 South LLC and Old Mine Associates LLC in relation to this application. It is our position that the application before you poses significant activities, and I'm going to get into that in a moment because I'm struck by an aspect of the applicant's presentation. But there are significant activities within regulated areas that we believe will have a harmful and potentially irreversible impact on wetland resources and the resources that are within the jurisdiction of the commission. Our concerns are based not only on the potential for wetland impairment, but also on the inadequate treatment of stormwater, which threatens water quality and the broader environmental integrity of the area. Now, I just have to jump on one comment, and the applicant seems to be dancing around whether this involves a significant activity or not. And Attorney Knuff was very careful about making sort of a comment that this commission has not found that this involves a significant activity and that the public hearing was scheduled only because there may be, there might be significant public interest. He did let on, as he should have, that this commission can find that this application involves a significant activity. And I would suggest that under your regulations, I don't know how you can't find that this involves a significant activity where you are basically eliminating and filling a wetland that exists. But just to assist this commission, I'll refer the commission to your regulations, which define a significant impact activity means any activity, including but not limited to the following activities, which may have a major effect or significant impact on the area for which an application has been filed or on another part of the inland wetland or water course system. One, any activity involving deposition or removal of material which will or may have a substantial effect on the wetland or water course or on wetlands or water courses outside the area for which the activity is proposed. Two, any activity which substantially changes the natural channel or may inhibit the natural dynamics of a water course system. Now, and there's more, but the applicant is filling that wetland adjacent to Route 111 completely. And and initially suggests that this may not involve, doesn't involve a significant activity. They talk about the origin of the wetland and how, you know, it's a drainage ditch that over the years has turned into a wetland. But the point is, it is certainly a wetland, and this certainly involves regulated area, which is why we are here. And while the applicant is sort of poo-pooing the value of that wetland, the applicant goes to great lengths to provide this amazing mitigation in Old Mine Park, which is also a significant activity. So, so which way do you want it? Under any circumstances, this involves alteration of wetlands and water courses. I guess creation of wetlands, the applicant would claim. But there is no basis upon which this commission cannot find that this involves a significant activity based on the way the applicant has presented it and based on the activities that are proposed. So that's item one. I wanted to get that right out in the air. Now, I don't understand. I have to comment on two more things. One, the applicant is presenting documents tonight in the course of its presentation of this mitigation plan, which are not part of the record in this matter and were not made available for public inspection before the hearing at any time. And somehow I suspect that these documents were not prepared this afternoon or this evening, and yet they are suddenly thrust into the public hearing by the applicant. So that's item one. I, in terms of the engineering comments which were circulated, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate the time that the engineering, the town engineer and the staff took on this. But it is interesting to me that that some of the requested comments are, comment number seven, provide the documentation on the hydrodynamic separators and that they meet pollutant loads for purposes of the Connecticut Deep Stormwater Quality Manual. Submit deep and perk tests for the proposed rain gardens. Include rain garden details with cross-sections, specify material. Provide structural design for the proposed retaining walls. These are all items that were raised by Mr. Trinkus as well. And I don't see how this commission can, how can you evaluate this, this application without having those materials in hand? I don't understand that. And I don't understand why, you know, this, I was sort of surprised that this isn't the focus of some discussion by the commission at this point, that this information is not provided. And Mr. Trinkus has pointed that out. The town engineer or these engineering comments corroborate what Mr. Trinkus is saying in his letter, in his initial letter. And Attorney Knuff is correct that much of what Attorney, Mr. Trinkus said in his letter that was submitted today was stated in his initial letter, but it's not in the record. So, you know, I don't, you know, I think we've got a ways to go in this public hearing because the applicant has got to provide that information, and we're going to get into it with Mr. Trinkus in a moment. As, but I think it's pretty evident to the commission why you need that information. So, I mean, I'll, I'll go on, but once again, a wetland is being totally eliminated. And I, and there are definitely significant impacts presented by this application. And I've got to also say, the application, including the plans, the supporting documents, forms, notices, calculations, are incomplete. They're missing critical and required data and authority pursuant to Section 7 of your regulations. The application lacks required information and data, and, you know, I've already pointed some of this out, and once again, it's corroborated, that you can't make the findings as a commission without this information and data. You don't have that information and data necessary to confer upon the commission, the jurisdiction to make the findings you have to make pursuant to Section 10 of your regulations to approve this application. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Trinkus to go through his letter. You have his initial letter. Yes, he did submit a supplemental letter this morning, and I, well, he provided it and I filed it. And once again, we do take issue with the exhibit that was just presented this evening. And that, that we haven't had, I haven't had a chance to review it. I saw it tonight as it was presented. But let me turn it over to Mr. Trinkus at this point, and he can go into greater detail on the missing information and how the application, as it's presently configured, does not provide a basis upon which the commission can approve the application. If you can allow Mr. Trinkus to present. And also, he'd need screen sharing capacity as well.
Mr. Green, he has the ability to share a screen.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commission. For the record, my name is Stephen Trinkus. I'm a licensed professional engineer with an office in Salisbury, Connecticut. Before I share the screen, you know, the 2024 DEP Stormwater Manual, which replaces the 04 version of the same, DEP consider these guidance documents. They're not bibles. And quite honestly, there's many aspects of the 24 version that are in conflict with how things actually work in the field. One of the biggest conflicts is this section, as the applicant pointed out below table 4.3, that if you provide this retention volume, which is equal to the water quality volume in a system, you know, all these pollutants are going to magically disappear. That's not how it works in Mother Nature. Pollutant removal of pollutants from stormwater occurs by sedimentation. It calls, it's by filtration, it's by absorption. There's chemical and biological activities that occur to reduce the pollutant loads. Simply providing a volume and saying that, you know, you can go home and the water is going to be clean, it doesn't work that way at all. And particularly when you're in sand and gravel soils as the large system in the northeast corner of the site is located based on the soils testing by solely engineering. You know, gravel soils have high permeability rates, which means water moves through them very quickly. But on the flip side, they also provide minimal treatment of the water because, A, there is no organic component to sand and gravel soils, and the water is moving too quickly for anything to to get treated. So it's imperative when you're using underground infiltration systems that you reduce the pollutant load substantially before you dump it into the ground. That way you do not pollute the groundwater. As I've cited in my original letter and the recent letter, we've provided removal efficiencies. The University of New Hampshire Stormwater Center, which has been in operation since 04, and there it's an ongoing monitoring system, they have, they monitor all kinds of different practices, and the flows going to each of them are consistent. So each system sees the same volume, the flow rate, pollutant load, so they can basically compare apples to apples. And it's based on their data that, you know, catch basins with four-foot sumps and a hooded outlet will remove only 9% of total suspended solids. An online hydrodynamic separator, as proposed here, will remove 28 to 29% of total suspended solids. But neither of these systems remove nutrients. And the major pollutants that we find in runoff from commercial sites or residential condominiums, mainly from the vehicle movements, are total suspended solids, you know, sand from winter operations, nitrogen and phosphorus, which occur via atmospheric deposition on the impervious surface, which then gets washed off, metals and hydrocarbons, which are from the movement of vehicles. You know, metals, primarily zinc is the indicator metal for other metals, is from our brake pads, and I'm sure we've all washed vehicles where our rims are, you know, pretty black covered instead of being nice silver colored. So the DEP manual surprisingly is silent on metals and hydro- Um, so the DEP manual surprisingly is silent on metals and hydrocarbons. But those are really important ones to really treat because they can be toxic to aquatic organisms at very low concentrations. Um, there was a, an approach developed in the oh four manual uh based on really a lack of information at the time, that all these pollutants that I just went through all attach to sediment. And if you trap the sediment, inherently you get all these other pollutants. Well, in the intervening 20 years of research, particularly in the low-impact development field, you know, that's been proven to be a false narrative because these pollutants, if they occur and they attach to sediment, you know, then the removal rates for nitrogen and phosphorus would be equal to what you see for total suspended solids. And they're simply not because they all removed by a different process. So the northwest, uh, the northeast system, if you take nine percent of TSS on the catch basin and twenty-eight percent on the separator, you know, you're at thirty-seven percent. Um, I was being generous with the applicant as this site already has a building on it that it would be a redevelopment site. And, you know, the DEP manual says in that case you should be at eighty percent uh reduction. Well, thirty-seven is a far cry from uh eighty. The new site, which the applicant is citing, is a ninety percent TSS removal. So we're much lower than that. Um, so again, these are, the whole purpose of these manuals, and this goes back to the original one, is to get engineers to start designing uh stormwater practices that address water quality. Prior uh to really 2000 and even 2002, the emphasis was on peak rate control in virtually every town in the state of Connecticut and most of the towns in uh the states in New England. It was only in the early 2000s that water quality really became an issue because of uh pollution in surface waters, both uh freshwater systems and tidal systems. Um, so the whole purpose of this manual is to design systems to actually reduce the pollutant load significantly. You know, I put the references in the, the letter today. Um, I also added the, what's called the ASE, this American Society of Civil Engineers BMP database. This is an ongoing database of primarily uh operated by Wright Water Engineers out of Denver, Colorado. And it's based on all field monitoring data. If I had a site and I was monitoring it and I could submit the data to them and they would incorporate it. And they look at all these various pollutants and they look at all different types of uh treatment systems. Um, in, in regarding hydrodynamic separators, the average of online and offline configurations is thirty-eight percent for TSS. Well, UNH is twenty-nine. The average overall in ASE, which the most recent uh version is 2023, is only slightly higher than that, and that's an average. So if that's an average, it's likely that the online configuration value is lower. Um, so these separators do not provide the level of treatment that the manufacturers represent. When you look uh effectively behind the curtain of the manufacturer's data, it is all lab-based data. It is manufactured stormwater in a controlled environment. It is not the real world. That's why the UNH data, when it first started being reported in 2005 and six, was a boon to, quite honestly, all of us engineers in New England. Because A, UNH is a uh more northern climate than we are. I happened to do my undergraduate work up there years ago. Um, and, you know, it, it basically showed that a lot of these LID practices, such as rain gardens, function very well in a northern climate. But again, that's a field monitoring data of a nine-acre commuter parking lot that is widely used on a daily basis by uh students at UNH. And again, the ASE database is a national database, um, you know, from here to California and everywhere in between. Even they accept data from uh other countries into it. Uh, because again, the more data you have, the better you can design these practices. So, you know, the northern system is going to go into groundwater. Groundwater will ultimately move downhill following topographic gradient and likely get into the wetland system that's in the southwest corner of the site, because that's the low point of this uh particular project. Um, the driveway coming in off 111 only has catch basins and a hydrodynamic separator before discharging to the western end of uh that wetland corridor. So we're going to have inadequate treatment of runoff going into that system. When you change the water quality in a wetland system, that is an adverse physical impact. Because many species over time will, you know, die off or they move because of the changes in water quality. So water quality is, is a physical feature of a wetland system as much as the soils and vegetation is. And when you change the water quality in a bad way, you are creating adverse impact uh for that.
And a significant impact, Mr. Trinkus?
Yes, it would be a significant impact. These impacts of stormwater do not occur the day you build a project. These are cumulative impacts that one day you wake up and you really have a problem. And at that point, it is really difficult uh to fix. So it's important that you're preemptive and you proactive in designing systems to reduce the pollutant loads to uh minimize and or eliminate these adverse water quality impacts uh to a wetland system. Um, as Attorney Green pointed out, you know, we are filling fourteen hundred square feet of wetlands here. We're filling it up to about sixteen or seventeen foot of fill. That's a lot of dirt going in here, over fourteen hundred square feet. You know, it, we have not seen alternatives to the actual crossing of the driveway. Are there other ways that you could build this driveway without filling the wetland corridor and maintain it in its integrity? That is a feasible and prudent alternative, which has not been explored uh by the applicant at this time. I'm gonna um share my screen so I can just pull up uh sheet number five of the uh applicant's plans. So this is sheet uh number five, well, sheet five of the PDF set. It's actually sheet uh number 2.21. Um, so as the applicant pointed out, we now have three rain gardens uh proposed. Uh, the first, number one is the one down here uh near the driveway over the wetland corridor. Um, rain gardens are an LID practice um designed to filter and infiltrate runoff. That is the, you know, the formal name of these systems is actually bio-retention. Um, not really a rain garden, in my professional opinion. This, you know, LID uh is my area of expertise. I've uh presented many LID conferences in 2008, run by the American Society of Civil Engineers. Um, also, if you've had a chance to look at my uh CV, I've been a consultant and presenter in Asia on these uh same issues. So I do lid as a dominant part of my practice on uh development projects. So rain garden number one here, when you look at the original contours, the bottom, the existing grade down here is roughly three thirty-four to three thirty-two. And the rain garden itself is up at three fifty-five. So, you know, this is all in fill material and it's also located right off the parking area. So, you know, the fill under a portion of this rain garden is going to have to be structural fill and compacted in order to support the edge of the parking lot. Otherwise, this, you know, uh, corner of the parking lot, if you don't compact the fill outside of it, is going to want to fail and ultimately, you know, collapse downhill. But, you know, we're in over twenty feet of fill here. There's no specifications on the fill. Um, I think as your town engineer pointed out, there is no detail of the rain gardens. Uh, these contours aren't labeled, so you can't verify the volume that's being provided. Uh, the applicant put a table on the plan uh providing the volume, but you can't verify it because we don't know any data about it. Um, so again, these are infiltration practices uh to, to uh to treat the water, the drains to it, and also to infiltrate it. And when you're in twenty feet of fill, some of which is going to be compacted to a level just below concrete to support the parking lot, that's not going to occur here. Uh, rain garden number two is the one in the central island at the southern end of it. And again, we have no test pit data here. This one appears to be uh located in an undisturbed area of the site. But again, you need to, you know, have test pits here and infiltration tests. And the infiltration tests, you know, are a double-ring infiltration test. It's not a percolation test. The 24 manual actually clearly states that percolation tests cannot be used for the design of infiltration uh practices. But the infiltration tests also have to be done at or below the bottom of the soil media or gravel layer of a bio-retention system, because that is the soil layer where the water is actually going to infiltrate. Doing that test on the ground surface when the bottom of your system is two to three feet below grade is pretty much meaningless because it may be completely different soil conditions. Um, rain gardens also have to be modeled hydrologically, just like uh the underground detention system, you know, up here in the northeast corner of the site. You know, you have a storage volume, you have your drainage area coming in for your given rainfall events. And you, you provide an infiltration rate or fifty percent of the infiltration rate in a a hydroca, uh program such as HydroCAD. And you see how, what the ponding depth will be here. The ponding depth very well may exceed the available storage volume here, which means the water is then going into the edge of the parking lot. Again, we don't know if that's the case because we have no data for that. Uh, lastly, rain garden number three is located off the right front corner of the new building within the existing parking lot. Um, you know, parking lots, again, are structural fill. Uh, this one's right near an existing catch basin and pipe, so it's likely very disturbed soils. Um, and again, we have no data to know that these are, that these work. Um, you know, it, I, I do applaud the town engineer for requesting some lid on a project. But when lid is added after the fact, which this is, this is really termed greenwashing from an engineering standpoint, because you're adding something that looks green to the plan, but it's really not green because it does not function as green infrastructure is intended. Green infrastructure uh or lid, you can take one of the terms, is designed to treat small frequent rainfall events by filtering the water and infiltrating the water to reduce surface volume. And again, when they're added in kind of after the fact, it really, you know, and with the lack of soil data here, it really doesn't work. Um, so, you know, going back to, again, you know, the, the manual aspect, you know, going up to this northeast, you know, detention system, you know, analogy I like to use is if, you know, if you take, you know, you've used your own bathtub in your house and you put six inches of water in it, that's a certain volume. Now, if I put a foot of water in my bathtub, is it going to get, am I going to get any cleaner sitting in it? No. And that's the same issue with providing the storage volume. Simply providing a volume does not equate to treatment. And, you know, with all due respect to uh the DEP manual, um, I've had other lid engineers look at this section and they're kind of all aghast that that got put in there because it simply is incorrect that how these systems work is not just provide a volume and walk away from it. You knew, you need to do what's called a pollutant loading analysis to show how each of your treatment uh systems, starting with catch basins to your separator, uh, you know, to your underground infiltration and or the rain gardens, will function to reduce pollutant loads. There is ample uh removal efficiencies published um on several manuals that I've done. Um, but also uh in the ASE database, they look at influent versus effluent concentrations. And you can uh come up with a percent removal, you know, by simply doing a little bit of math. Um, but generally you need, you know, you have multiple treatment systems to reduce it. This is all secondary practices. Catch basins are secondary practice. They always have been. The separators, again, are also a secondary practice because they're, they don't do great, you know, uh, removal of other pollutants. Um, in both my original letter and uh the letter today, while, you know, UNH says twenty-nine percent on uh suspended solids, it's, okay, it's forty-two percent on hydrocarbons, metals is twenty-six percent, but nothing for nitrogen and phosphorus. And you will get nitrogen and phosphorus due to atmospheric deposition here. So again, you need to address all of these, and metals and hydrocarbons are a big concern. Uh, and because particularly they come in two forms. They come as particulate and they come in soluble forms. And so if you're, you know, assuming you're trapping sediment, you may trap some of the metals and hydrocarbons, but ones that are in soluble form are passing right through. Uh, one of the other issues uh that has not come up yet is the use of de-icing agents. Um, you know, we've gotten unfortunately as a society away from using sand as attraction on snowy parking lots and roadways. Um, thanks to our DOT, which is, you know, went, started with the Brines and the towns unfortunately followed uh suit hook, line and sinker in that case. Chlorides do not leave the environment. There is not a treatment system, both conventional or low-impact development, that will remove chlorides. Chloride impacts plants, it impacts soils, it impacts groundwater. And the impacts get worse over time because nothing removes the chlorides. There's no chemical process that breaks them down. They just get down in certain areas and they just build up over time. Uh, so obviously in sand and gravel where the water moves quickly, you will see chloride impacts, you know, moving down through, you know, the shallow groundwater on this site. Uh, this is a major concern and I believe professionally that um many, if not most, towns in Connecticut in a few years are going to have to deal with remediation of chlorides. And it's likely to be very difficult and very expensive uh to correct um the use of these de-icing agents um on paved areas. Um, so the bottom line here is there are adverse impacts from stormwater onto the wetland system um due to the inadequate treatment of the runoff. Um, I am very familiar with the manual. I have written several LID manuals in the state of Connecticut. So I understand the treatment processes that go along with this. And, you know, many aspects unfortunately of our state guidance document, which is what DEP terms it, you know, are not correct based on the science in the field. The science in the field is what drives good decision-making. And that's what as engineers we strive for, to minimize the impact on the environment. And in this case, there will be adverse impacts uh due to increased pollutant loads uh in the stormwater being discharged. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if uh members of the commission have questions for Mr. Trinkus.
All right, I've opened it up to the commission. Any questions? Down at this time? All right. All right, did you want to continue, Attorney Green?
Sure. Uh. So it's our position uh. It's our position based on uh the information as it has been presented. And once again, it's our position that the application is grossly incomplete and missing uh quite a bit of material as Mr. Trinkus uh touched on. But also, if you look at the requirements for applications under uh section seven of your regulations, there's a lot of missing information. But uh, as it is presently presented, that the proposed development will unreasonably pollute, impair, potentially destroy the public trust in the air, water, and natural resources. That, that's what we talk about in terms of these petitions to intervene. And uh, we have filed a petition and we have alleged specifically in paragraph four that the stormwater management system proposed in the application will not adequately reduce non-point source pollutant loads, which will result in increased pollutant loads being discharged to the groundwater via the, via the underground stormwater management system and into uh, well, I guess for now, the uh two delineated wetlands, but I guess ultimately uh into the Paquonic River. And uh, so certainly the uh petition intervened is not a leap to uh prove. And uh, once again, uh, we believe that pollutant pollution will result from the application. Now, in terms of uh, you know, you have standards for approval and once again, we've addressed uh some of that uh through Mr. Trinkus. Um, Attorney Nuff has uh, in his written submission and in his presentation tonight, uh, he makes vague references to case law. And he uh, he, I, I'm always suspicious and I always, uh, first of all, it's not the job of this commission to interpret uh the law. So I'm not gonna uh spend a lot of time uh citing case law or present cases because it's, it's pretty pointless and it's not really uh, once again, within the jurisdiction of this commission to figure out who is citing what case law, what case law applies. But let me just say that it is our position that Connecticut case law does not support this application as it has been applied for and based upon the record that has been presented. Uh, I can't. I can't respond to the materials, nor can Mister Trinkus to whatever was presented tonight on mitigation. And it is not part of the public record as far as I can tell, it was just presented to the commission. Similarly, I don't believe, and once again, I don't know how the commission doesn't find that this involves a significant activity. And I urge the commission to do that, but sort of this quick reference tonight to feasible and prudent alternatives, I have not seen those materials on the feasible and prudent alternatives that have been presented and documented by the applicant. And the sort of the challenges, I understand what the applicant is saying, but there's a balancing that has to be done by this commission and once again, the applicant has not provided that information to the commission and I also want to say that sort of the starting point for all of the discussions on this application seem to be that we must have this shopping center and we must have this grocery use on the property. And under any circumstances, feasible and prudent alternatives might might consist of, for example, a smaller development. And the starting point is the impact on the resources, the starting point is not that we must have this thirty four thousand feet or whatever the figure was sized building. And I note that early on in its presentation at the last session, the applicant made a point of the fact that we must have this building. And it is not necessarily the job of this commission to provide the applicant with the exact development that they want. Because as this commission recognizes, you have to balance the requirements in your regulations. I do want to call the commission's attention to section ten point two of your regulations, and if you'll just bear with me for a moment. And the criteria for a decision. Are set forth in section ten point two, and again, it does make specific reference to the purpose for and any feasible improvement alternatives to the proposed regulated regulated activity, which would cause less or no environmental impact. But once again, you haven't been provided with the information necessary to make that assessment. The relationship between the short term and long term impacts of the proposed regulated activity, as Mister Trinkus has pointed out. And as we've argued, you don't have that. You don't have that information. The irreversible and irretrievable loss of wetland resources, which would be caused by the regulated activity. Once again, we would suggest that you cannot assess that. E is the character and degree of injury to or interference with safety, health or the reasonable use of the property. Which is threatened, caused or threatened by the proposed regulated activity, again. That can't be found and finally, the impacts. This is paragraph F of ten point two also can't be assessed. So once again. And I know I've said it many times, but the application and by the application, I mean all of the information that has been submitted and all of the application, the forms, notices. All of it. Calculations are inadequate or incomplete and are missing critical and required data. And on that basis, we urge the commission to deny the application. And to grant the petition intervened prior to that. And I on the petition intervened, I wouldn't. That is under the statute, under section twenty two A nineteen. That provides us where there is a reasonable likelihood of some pollution, it allows us to participate in this hearing. And so I don't, while it is important. I think that the groundwork for that and the basis for that has certainly been proven. So we urge the commission to grant the petition to intervene, which which grants party status to us in this proceeding. And I guess lastly, I'd like to thank the commission for agreeing to have the public hearing, I appreciate it, I think that's good, good government. And I think this is an application that is worthy of it. And I'm happy to answer any questions and once again, thank you for your patience.
Any questions or comments to Attorney Green? If you're also Attorney Green, I'm I'm gonna assume that Attorney Knuff has a comment or two to make.
I will think so, thank you, Mister Chairman.
Mister Chairman.
Go ahead, Attorney Cordon.
Yes, I just, I of course Attorney Knuff will have an opportunity to respond, but I do just want to remind the Chair that this is a public hearing tonight, so there are other members of the public that may want to make comment at this time. Then perhaps Attorney Knuff can do a summation after that, but I defer to Attorney Knuff if he has a preference to that.
No, let's hear from other members of the public if they're out there.
Again, I thank you Attorney Cordon. Mister Chin, anybody out there that's looking to?
We'll see if there are other members of the public who would like to speak, please raise your hand at this time by pressing the button at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're on the phone. And Mister Schubel is on his way in.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, if you can give your name, address.
My name is Justin Schubel, fifty six Meadow Road. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the Trumbull Economic and Community Development Commission or E C D C. And the following statement is submitted for the record. Trumbull E C D C commissioners serve as ambassadors to the business community. And are charged with promoting projects that help Trumbull grow its grand list and quality of life. We unanimously support the approval of the proposed development at One Trefal Drive. An excellent opportunity it provides in growing jobs, amenities and fulfilling our communities wants and needs. The proposed project on Trefal Drive will provide diverse retail options. Including a grocery store and restaurant alternatives that Trumbull residents have been desperate for. The project will fill many voids and significantly grow the underperforming grand list property. The property's optimal location on a commercial corridor also provides easy access. Leaving underperforming properties on the grand list can and has led to negative economic and community impacts on residents. Including millions of dollars in lost tax revenue. The Trumbull E C D C is looking forward to seeing the exciting expansion at Trefal Drive. And the provided options and growth for our Trumbull community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Bill, is there anyone else that wishes to speak or comment?
There are no other members of the public who have indicated they would like to make a comment.
All right, thank you, as always.
Mister Chairman, I again Attorney Cordon. I believe that there was correspondence that was also submitted to the commission, I don't know if there was some letters, I don't know.
One letter from the Trumbull Chamber of Commerce, I believe.
Through the chair, that is correct, we did receive one letter today.
Okay, and basically I have it, but unfortunately I didn't download it, it's on my computer. Basically, they're in support of the application, am I correct, Colleen?
That is correct.
All right.
Tatiana may be able to pull the letter up, but I believe everybody should have received it a copy today.
And thank you, Mister Chairman.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Attorney Knuff.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I'll probably be brief, I know it's it's getting sort of late, we're all accustomed to many, many late nights and only nine twenty, but on the other hand, there's no need to prolong this because we're gonna be coming back for another night. You know, I started out by saying at the very beginning that Mister Trinkus' memo was lacking any specificity. And boy, between Attorney Green and Mister Trinkus. You don't need a crystal ball to know that they're not gonna make any specific allegations because there are none to make. I find interesting and then just, and so that's sort of like the theme that's gonna go through my comments. Let's take for instance, the very first thing Attorney Green mentioned, that you should find that this is a significant activity, started quoting the definition, but even then he stopped because frankly, if you actually read the definition, we don't meet any of those seven criteria. It talks about substantial effects, substantially changes the natural account, we don't meet any of those. And he was very careful not to indicate with any specificity of any kind of how we are a significant activity. Their mere feeling of a drainage ditch is not a significant activity. It doesn't meet any of those criteria. So that's the first thing. He mentioned about the new documents that were submitted, the only two documents that were submitted were the two pictures that Jackson used for the new mitigation area. You would already have the memo from Luke Morrow as well as a visual depiction of the area in which we want to do the mitigation. So relatively minor, yes, it was prepared this afternoon at my request by Jackson Smith. We submitted it for the record, I don't think that, you know, this application is gonna rise or fall on those two items. And by the way, we're gonna be submitting an application for that work, so that you are not approving that this evening. We are going to demonstrate that 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 application, that work should be approved by this commission, so there's there's no harm to Attorney Green or his client with the fact that, you know, two photographs were presented this evening and obviously we're not closing the period time, if you if you want us to respond next week or in a month on the limited basis of those two photographs, have at it. With regard to oh, so Mister Trinkus' two memos. The second one, I think is entirely redone with this first, doesn't reference at all our responses, so he merely regurgitates what we have said before. Attorney Green, there's missing data, again, you know, talks about section ten point two, there is nothing specific that has cited, you know, that's missing from our application materials and I note that Todd John's memo does not indicate there were that we are missing any required information. With regard to Mister Trinkus' testimony, let's note, he is not a wetland scientist, he's not an ecologist. He is a professional engineer, I believe. I find it rather astonishing that you know, he is is telling the commission that it should ignore the D E P stormwater manual, I think this is a first for all of us unless you're in the business of what Mister Trinkus is in is manufacturing bases for denying good applications. Sort of interesting that you talk about the impact on aquatic organisms without indicating that they were any or what those were, what those impacts would be, or what frankly, what the impact would be on any resource. It's not the impact on flora or fauna, it is the impact on a wetland or water course in a negative fashion. Again, just more generalized concerns without any specific data. He talks about T S S removal, we provided a very thorough response to number sixteen in well, I didn't, we didn't, Luke Morrow did with regard to T S S removal where he talks about it's ninety percent T S S removal. He didn't respond to Luke's response because he'd rather just you know, maintain that there's some other fictitious standard out there that he won't cite to other than his own specific knowledge. You know, it's funny, he mentions chlorides, which I saw were salts on the parking lot. Well, there's a parking lot there now and it would be nice if Mister Trinkus could come back next month and tell us that his client where at Home Depot never uses salt on his parking lot. Because maybe if he, if his client is going to or go using any salt on any portion of their property, we would consider that as well, so sort of interesting observation is. So yes, I did cite the case law because there's a lot of things that we can get led astray, led astray by, you know, interveners and led astray by opposing counsel and opposing engineers, but that's why I cited to some case, I'd be happy to provide the actual cases if you like. Because it's easy to, you know, end into this wild speculation of feasible improvement alternatives saying, you know, the sky is gonna fall because there's gonna be a parking lot on an area where there already is one. When the case law says that that is not a basis on which you can deny an application. So this is sort of interesting, again, I'm gonna cite to it and I'll give you the case law. A trial court improperly applies the substantial evidence test, but it relies on speculative evidence to support a commission's reasons for denying the application and fails to cite to any specific evidence to support the conclusion that the applicant's proposed actions were likely to have an adverse impact on the wetland or water course in proposed site development. What you heard is testimony that Mister Trinkus would give on any project, on any location. Frankly, anywhere in the United States. It is not specific to the site other than that the area to the northwest has gravelly soils and then speculation as to where that where that stormwater might percolate to. Is the limit of his specific evidence on on our site, so. No, I think I'll leave it at that. We will rewatch the tape, try to parse out all of the various claims that Attorney Green and Mister Trinkus have made and will respond to them thoroughly in writing, so it's in the record. We all know where this is headed, it will all be in the Superior Court at some point, and so I want to make it very clear in the record that there is nothing Attorney Green or Mister Trinkus have raised that we have not responded to in a substantive Look forward to seeing all you again in a month from now, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any comments, questions? Is at this point, you go ahead, John.
I take it we're having a continuance, we haven't voted on it.
Yes, yeah, I was just going to bring that up.
What does the applicant need to bring back next month?
Well, that's a good question, Mr. Loria, and and I know it's your custom in practice, but we had indicated that we would give written responses to Todd John's memo, and I know it's it's typical that you have proven application based upon conditions that were founded on on her memo. Again, I want a very, very tight record since this is likely headed for appeal. Commissioner Verispy has asked for a survey depicting the location of trees that are gonna be removed and not removed. I want to re-listen again to Attorney Green and Mister Trinkus' testimony to make sure that there is absolutely nothing there that could provide a basis for denial, however misguided, you know, their attempts, you know, have been. So it's really just our ability to provide you a very tight and cogent record so that rather than relying upon transcript, frankly, a reviewing court can actually read the documents and have a much easier ability to draft.
Thank you, Attorney Knuff for the direct.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, David.
Attorney Green and his and Mister Trinkus in their lengthy dry tribe. Referenced missing soils testing data for the rain gardens. Tatiana, do you have sufficient soil testing data to adequately review and advise this commission as to the effectiveness of their their designs?
We have included the soil test data request in our comment. However, this is a minor this is a minor data in our opinion that can be provided prior to construction because it is an existing parking lot and it's often not feasible to excavate in the middle of it and one rain garden is actually gonna be placed in the fill, so previously we have always worked with the developers to provide engineering information prior to construction. And that is why typically those engineering comments are a condition of approval, we do have enough data and information for the primary stormwater system. So we're very comfortable with that. I hope that answers your question. So we're very comfortable with that. I hope that answers your question.
For the record, that was Tatiana, our town engineer. Is there anything that you need from the applicant that, you know, is missing or insufficient?
I do not see in my cursory glance of the drawings cross-sections detailing the construction of those rain gardens, which it would indicate depth of soil medium, types of soil medium, composition of the soils within that rain garden, the plants, et cetera. Or any sort of requirements for infiltration rates in those for design criteria in a finished condition. So saying, you know, the water in the end result has to perk at a certain rate so that the water, you know, leaves the system within a certain amount of time, which is a standard detail when you're doing, or a standard approach when you're doing a rain garden, you want to calculate, you know, the soil permeability so that the water leaves within a designed timeframe as opposed to sort of, you know, eh, just throw some dirt in there, it'll be fine. So those details should be provided. Mr. Kenny should be able to provide those details along with the engineer and the landscape architect to provide those rain garden details.
All right. I'm going to put this out to the commission. Is there anything else that you wish to see to the next meeting? The other request, you know, I was running all day and I downloaded the items from the engineer, Mr. Trinkus, like at about two thirty. And they hardly gave me enough time to read it. I'm not a engineer, but I do like to, you know, confer with our engineer and get an idea. So if we can get this in, in a timely manner so we can peruse it and see it before our next meeting would help. Are you fine with that attorney Noth to do what Commissioner Veresby is requesting?
Absolutely, yes.
All right. Is there anything else from the, go ahead, Luke?
Yeah, look, sorry, Luke Morrow for the record, we can certainly provide rain garden details and specifications prior to the meeting.
Okay. Is there anything? Oh, go ahead, Carmine.
Mr. Veresby commented earlier about the area in front of or north of that wall. That's up by the northern wetland about possibly having some native plants just kind of screen the wall. And it was mentioned that the slope is pretty steep and I would like to see, I'd like to agree with Dave that to see if any plants can be put in that deep slope to offer some sort of a blocking effect of that wall.
Yeah, we, we, we will do our best to take a look at that and come back to you with a substantive response.
It's my understanding, I believe that Mary was going to look into that for you.
Yeah, and, and, and we'll get, we'll get Bill Kenny and Jackson on it as well. Happy, happy to scrutinize that a little bit more. By the way, the one thing I forgot to mention is this is an existing parking lot with no stormwater treatment of any kind or very little. So that was also not mentioned by Attorney Green or Mr. We are approving the parking.
You know, on that note, this is Commissioner.
Go ahead, Rich, David, go ahead.
On that note, you know, Luke, this drainage system is it, it is an improvement over the existing condition.
Yeah, we, we found, we found, Luke Morrow for the record, we found no indication of any type of stormwater quality treatment or stormwater management system in terms of attenuating runoff flow. It's basically a number of catch basins and pipes that just flows out into the street. There's no attenuation and there's no stormwater quality measures we can find. So that is correct.
Hey, I have a, a request. One of the comments that was made about the chloride. Now, this is basically this wetlands area is right on the side of the road. Through the years, is that, obviously that's been affected if there's that much, you know, salt and stuff going in there. So I don't know if you can kind of address that at the next meeting if it's been if it affects the, you know, the overall effectiveness of this, you know, wetlands. Is that seemed to be something that they were, you know, pushing, so. All right, any other comments, questions?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Rich.
Just in regards to the salt. It would be useful if perhaps the engineering staff or some staff could show the difference between existing conditions and the proposed conditions. Because the intervenor made a claim that there would be a tremendous amount of, as he called them, fluorides.
Excuse me.
Fluoride, fluoride, salt.
Right, so, so if the claim is that this new development is going to deposit a certain amount, an X amount of salt. What's the difference between leaving it untreated, which apparently if there's sheet flow going into the wetland versus the new plan? I could understand if there's a significant increase in salt. But if that increase is not evident, I, I almost feel like we're, we're working in circles here. We're, we're being told that there's going to be more salt. I, I'm not claiming there not, but what's the difference between existing conditions? Because the other option, there's approval and denial. Denial means it stays as it is. Is that better than the claim they're making? I, I don't know. That, that claim doesn't seem to be very clear. We just heard there's going to be a lot of salt. I don't know what a lot means. Perhaps there was some official number given. I, we need to see a comparison perhaps made by an impartial staff member like our own staff rating it based on these proposals. That would be convenient if that's the crux of the argument.
Very good, Rich.
As I said, same argument every site they ever look at.
Through the chair. This is David.
Oh, go ahead, David.
Moving the site to Florida, you know, there are standard maintenance practices that are applied to sites all across the region. This site is no different than any other site. Short of, you know, not touching the snow and not maintaining the site at all and leaving it undeveloped. There is, the engineering systems are designed within best management practices to try and you know, mitigate these specific things. So, you know, this is, whether it's this development or another development in town, that we're going to be facing the same issues.
All right, at this point, Greg, can you make a motion to extend the public hearing to our next meeting, which I believe is March fourth?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the application twenty-four fourteen, Trumbull, one, one, one LLC permit approval for the construction of a thirty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty square foot commercial building with associated, associated driveways and parking, grading and planting within a regulated area at one trefoil drive be extended to the next meeting, which is March fourth, two thousand twenty-five at seven P M.
Okay, I need a second. Seconded by David. All in favor? For the record, it's unanimous. All right, I guess we'll see, see you next month on the fourth. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Greg, can you give us a rundown on January seventh's minutes for an approval?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the Town of Trumbull Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission meeting, which was held on what was the date?
January seventh.
January seventh, two thousand five.
I need a second. Okay, saying it by Rich, all in favor? And I'm assuming Carmine, you're a, yeah, you also, okay, thank you very much. Okay, at the lateness of the hour, I was going to go to Rich Deacon and ask if there's anything that's coming before us, but I don't want to get strung in. Quartered at this point. So we'll, we'll address that next month. Pardon?
You want a quick rundown or you want to wait?
Yeah, I, I've been getting calls on Nichols. That's why I, you know, very quickly.
It's important for us to hear it.
Uh, fire away.
Yeah, I can give you the quick rundown. Um, there was a pre-application hearing held at the last planning and zoning meeting regarding the development, potential development at the corner of Booth Hill Road and Unity Road. The total amount of houses that are proposed there would be forty-nine. I believe they're, they're limited to fifty. There's a couple existing homes that will stay on site. Theoretically would stay on site. The proposed property is dotted with wetlands. The application asks for an extension of something called a village residence district or V R D. Right now, that's limited to locations. And if any point I make a mistake, please, Mr. Cordon, correct me. But it's limited to locations with, that have two hundred feet of frontage on a state road. This would create a new and/or provision allowing properties with either two hundred feet of unbroken frontage on a state road and/or within twenty-five hundred feet of exit fifty to apply to put this overlay district zone onto the property. It would allow them to put forty-nine homes of, of a size to be determined on this property with the relevant wetlands and zoning approval. I don't need to explain the specter of state statute eight thirty G. I believe we're all aware of that. I'll save my own political pontificating for campaign season, but that always exists and you can do the math.
What's the size of the site, just for curiosity? Five acres, ten acres?
Mr. Cordon, isn't it approximately ten acres?
No, through, through the chair, it's sixteen acres with about approximately two acres being wetlands.
All right, thank you, Carmine.
That's, if, if that's correct, Jim.
I, I know the gross acreage is sixteen acres. I don't know the wetland breakdown, but I do know the gross.
They came up with the fourteen acres times the three point five, which is how they came up with their forty-nine houses.
Okay.
All right. Well, obviously that will be coming to us. So, all right, anything else?
Uh, just some, there, there's some applications on the Lindemann Old Town Oak View and Cambridge Quadrant. I know there are some wetlands near there. I'm not sure if they'll be on these specific applications, but stay alert for various zone change applications in that quadrant.
Richard, question?
Spot zoning.
Yeah, no, Greg.
Is it acceptable for this commission to have a separate meeting to discuss a little bit what we just heard tonight? It's, we have two lawyers battling things out here. How do you make your decision? You know, Mr. Trinkus is talking science that's not in our law. I mean, it makes sense what he's saying. But I found it very interesting. He says, well, the Connecticut D E P is a mess. But all we can do as a commission, I think, is follow the law. No?
Sorry, which Rich are you asking?
Well, I was going to turn it over to Attorney Cordon because I thought part of what he was saying was conjecture. Am I right?
Well, yeah, I, Commissioner Cernica, it's a very valid question, but because this case, this application is likely to be in court. I think all of our discussions need to be in the public meeting by the time that the application is before the commission. So we can, we can certainly, in our deliberations, when the public hearing is closed, have a free discussion. And I'd be happy to, you know, go through the analysis we need to go through at that time.
Got it. Thank you.
No problem.
As I said, the one thing I would like to see is that most of the material gets to us so we have time to, you know, read it, peruse it beforehand because getting it the same day is a little difficult. Go ahead, somebody said, oh, go ahead, Rich.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have a a deadline for documents to be submitted, which we've never enforced. Zoning has one too that doesn't really matter. Because we have this provision on the agenda that says anything that may rightfully come before the commission. And that's been used for very conveniently applicants throughout the decades have always come in that day. Well, here's the new application information. Sorry, we need a continuance. And it, it creates a situation where things are continued so often that the general public eventually gives up. If you look at Trumbull Center, planning and zoning, one person showed up. Look at wetlands. Look at any major application that we think is major. Nobody comes. Maybe, maybe it's because people think it's just going to be continued again and again and again, because over the years it has been, by no fault of our own. Applicants, I'm not saying this applicant, I'm saying applicants in general, delay and delay and deflect and bring things at the very last minute and completely ignore our deadlines. Why do we bother putting a deadline on the town website? And there's people out there that probably actually obey the deadline and say, oh, well, I must be too late. Okay. And they put off their applications, whereas others just say, well, forget it. I'm going to put it through anyway, the last day. We shouldn't have a deadline if we don't intend to actually use it. We should just delete it or enforce it, one or the other.
Well, if we enforce it, we end up in a lawsuit situation.
Then let's delete it. Why do we have a deadline saying that some people actually listen to and others completely flout and we've never done anything? I don't, I'm not saying we should enforce it, but why do we have it on the books when we all?
This is the brief one, right?
Basically, that's for when they're, you know, starting an application. During the application, you need information that happens, but it's just difficult when you get it the day before or the day of the next meeting to, you know, to try to get it into your mind and try to, you know, if you've got questions, it gives you very little time to really, you know, digest it, as they say.
It's not fair to staff either. Staff gets it at four fifty-nine and they have two photos to prepare.
Believe me, I I know what Tatiana and Bill and John go through. There's a lot on their, on their plate. Also for our attorney to, you know, to read it and digest it also, so.
We also have the ability to say, listen, we just got this information today. We're not even going to listen to you tonight. We need time to review it and we're going to continue to net to the next month. Or you can withdraw your application and get your crap together. But we have always, after our leaders, you know, lead
Which is too nice, that's all.
Let people just sort of keep going with it.
Well, I, I'll state something to you. When I first came on the commission, our attorney said something that really struck me. He said, Richard, remember, at the end of the day, these are your neighbors.
Exactly.
It's my position. We try to be accommodating. We try to work with people. I don't want to be vindictive or mean to anybody. You know, so it's, it's who we are, so.
But I think in certain instances, we get taken advantage of.
I don't doubt that and I don't question it, you know, so. But remember, I'm married. I'm used to it. So that's another story. You didn't think I was going to slip that in there, did you, Attorney Cordon?
Hey. I don't think that'll be in the appeals, so we're all right.
There you go. All right. If, if there be no other comments, questions, I move to adjourn. Thank you all. We will see you in a month.
Thank you.
Good night.
Take care, everyone.